Showed up. And I'm Jimmy, I I can't, I must pack my money, but you know about how many long years ago that was?
Yeah.
Okay. We're beating it dead worse. We're trying to get a professional fire department, we can't keep professional. Police officers, we have journeyman police officer coming. Getting what they want and then moving on. I heard suggestions, let's do. Uh, let's do uh incentives, like give them a sign on bonus. For them to come get the sign on bonus and then journey on down the road. We is so, you know, and and but that that really affects us. I had a medical emergency, it was a delta. Response, I went to the firehouse, walked with fire chief about it. It was a double response, it was the fire chief before this this one. The highest level response, it took forty minutes. Not one. Not one Swansea cop, not one Swansea EMS, not one Swansea fireman showed up at the house. Forty minutes. I'm E F T. They take, you got the golden hour. Had to wait for Delusio to show up. That 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 now is getting personal, now it's affecting me personally.
Well, can I reply to this now that you're saying for a minute? Say again? I just wanna reply that. We sit here at night here, as as a team and the team of Swansea, we try very hard, we're not here. To try and make it worse to Swansea, we all live in Swansea. And it's a little frustrating sometimes when you go on Facebook and there's a lot of things said that that are uninformed people that don't know. And I'm looking at it as a new selectmen and I'm on the other side of the window looking out and I'm part of this team now. So all I was doing is letting people know after reading all this stuff on Facebook. To let people know, we are here, we have public input, I was very polite about it and I let people know. This is where you come to get facts and answers. And all I was saying that George is that we're not, I'm not frustrated with anything. The little frustration I have is when I see all these people in the town work very hard, very hard. And they all have the best interests of this town.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of people. Uh that are just out there putting negative things out there and the negative things is not healthy for the town. If we're gonna build a good community and all be together here and try to solve these big problems, which I agree with you George, there is problems. We need the community here and when you get those people negative thoughts, let me finish.
You have to fix this full budget, all this and I think everyone feels the same way, if we can't stop that eighty percent of the dollar going to one. One organization. What is there to discuss at this meeting? Other than trying to keep, trying to keep your head above water. And and so we have a common parking wreck program. There's a budget for a common parking wreck program, but then you gotta pay as you go along. We have a landfill. We have a budget for the landfill, then we have to pay to use it. And I'm not blaming anyone, it's the circumstances. We're not trying to squeeze pennies to try to make ends meet.
But is this a Swansea product or?
It's donation, not.
Well, I don't know, but staying in it is all about a problem with funding the school, what's all of them, the burden is all of them are tax paid.
But they pay the money.
This is something we need to deal with at the state level.
And but it's also a federal, most people think.
Remember when they changed and they had a flat tax? My taxes went down. The donor towns had all pissed the hump and took it before and threw it out. So so this is a state level problem with education. And it's not just Swansea, is it not?
That's right.
I mean granted, we went up three point three eight, I mean, and we're building a new school.
And it's gonna go up more because they're projecting, they're trying to get another hundred kids there.
Yeah, they're lucky because all the other places have been built. But by the same token, this is something that we need to change on the state level.
And see, this kind of dialogue right here. This is what I was trying to get, not taking your time because I know you guys are volunteering. Trying to get different sort of opinion and learning so we can bring a warm vote and.
It's truly educating people. That's what's really, and that that's why when you said, now's the time to find out, you basically presented it such a way that. I could have a question to answer, and that's really what I wanted to know is why is it? And you get to a lot of it too, it's a, it's a state problem.
But it seems, it seems bigger than that. Federal, most people think the federal education one goes to our high schools. And I saw it on a post day, you'll find out most of that fed money is directed to colleges and student loans. Very little of that money gets filtered down to our local level and I, and now at the state. When I'm getting from these dialogues on the on the web, very little of that state money is getting back to our locals. So if if maybe somebody can offer cookies and doughnuts and coffee, maybe people would show up. It seems like more people go to the landfill on Saturdays than they do this meeting. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, one, one quick minute. Gary, you have somebody? All right, we'll go to uh. We'll, we'll do the public input. In a little bit, okay? Wanna get Steve Beddell? Mark LeBelle write it down for you. Steve Beddell's kinda on a schedule that he was supposed to be talking ten minutes ago, so if you could. We'll go to capital improvement plan committee update.
I passed out a summary of comments. We have two committees I'm considered with with me. Uh, this year's is pretty straightforward. I have four points I would like to make about it. One, we had to make two estimates of critical. Materiably large items. Weber Hill. And the fire station. We tried to pick them midpoint. Uh, based upon the best information we had at the report date, which was the twentieth of the date. So there's a caution with that and I see from the agenda that Mr. Branley has more information on Weber Hill. But I know, I understand the fire station's still a couple weeks out. Um, so with that caveat. The second item is a one-off item, which is the Grange. Which was hotly debated amongst the members. Uh, we finally compromised. As to saying we would allocate seventy-five thousand for the coming year. This is estimated at the net town match to redo the. Foundation. We also found out. That uh. Mister De, De Ross is here. Uh, that upon his inspection, no further work should go on in the Grange before the. Foundation issues are straightened out in uh. In particular, the windows, which would probably be ruined. Uh, so the first stipulation was, the first money has to go towards that project. The second and more critical. Recommendation to the board, and a strong one, was that this money only be used as matching funds. In other words, the Grange has to go out and find seventy-five thousand of their own four more. Before the town would kick in their seventy-five thousand. We've looked. For a good many years and I, this isn't my first year of the rodeo with this. Uh, for some sort of tangible proof that there's backing behind the Grange. To date, we have seen little to none. And I think this would hold their feet to the fire. While being fiscally responsible and offering up a town match, but without monetizing it. Subject to getting the grants they need. That's the recommendation.
I think you could also add that we invested in the roof. So that any further deterioration caused by the roof issues have have been obeyed, so that's part of the rationale, I think. To take this approach where we we allocate the money based on. Uh, the money that they're able to raise in matching funds because the building is stable. At this point.
I would quarrel stable.
Well, stable from the standpoint that if it doesn't happen next year, the year after, it's not going anywhere, we don't have the water damage occurring that that was occurring before.
It's not gonna further corrode with water damage.
Right.
But it's not a state of structures, it's.
No.
Onward, uh, as you know, C I P C looks at the capital spending for the town at two levels. One, the cash. Input that is generated through warrant articles at town meeting, through capital reserve funds and expendable trust. That's so-called the cash portion. The second portion we look at is debt service. Rather than pure debt, debt service is what your taxes go to pay. Debt service is principal plus interest on the outstanding debt. So the total C I P. Capital. Commitment. Is defined as though cash going into reserve accounts. Plus debt service on debt related to capital projects such as the fire station. On a cash basis. Much of the town, regular town departments are actually quite stable. Uh, we've been doing this now for several years and we have our ups and downs, inflation. Especially regarding vehicles has been punitive to us. But it's been very stable, the variances have come in spectral items. And last year saw two spectral items. One, the Grange, which was not recommended. In fact, it is zero funding come out, coming out of C I P C. And through the deliver to, and through the deliberative session. Ended up getting a hundred and eleven thousand. We've cut that back to seventy-five, which has restrictions. Uh. The other large item was, I believe, a hundred, a hundred fifty, a hundred going to Mount Caesar. Library. Uh, to. Uh, on an emergency basis to stabilize the second floor. And those funds were matched, I believe, three for one through their own fundraising. So. Uh, that's our big variance. And with that, we have a savings of eighty-six thousand dollars. We have various bumps in departments which on the. Workbook that you were handed are shown on page three. And it netted out to. A decrease of thirty-six thousand five hundred minus three point one percent year over year. Uh, but there was an increase. And it amounts to about what inflation is. Year over year for recurring department items, D P W. Uh, police fire, so forth and so on. Uh, if you turn to page, pages, well, page four. There, it's a seven-year summary. Actual this current year, twenty twenty-three or plus, six years going out budgeted. And you will see the cash lines which is at the bottom of page four.
Twenty, twenty-six in the back.
Did it number differently?
Well, cuz it's in with everything else, so.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, twenty-six of a hundred, isn't it?
Who's counting? Uh, you'll see it's remarkably steady going out. Uh, which is a good thing and it shows that there's good budget discipline. Uh, those numbers do not reflect inflation, so it will go up. Hopefully, the most draconian inflation is behind us right now. But we ain't gonna gain ground back. Uh, which brings us to the fourth thing. Which is total capital spending, which as I mentioned is cash coming in, plus annual debt service. And those are the two following pa- pages. Here, we see a sig- a significant increase. And in fact, when all debt put on and there are. Four projects coming on within the next two years. The new fire station hopefully once and forever. Fire engine two, which is overdue. And which was actually supposed to be a twenty-twenty-five item. The chief came in and said he thinks he can get at least one more year out of it. Which I commend him for. Uh, and we have, if we finally get the fire department. God, I hope it passes this year. The fire department out of town hall, we have town hall work. And we have a long overdue Department of Public Works building to house their. Their equipment, that's. Is actually a pretty critical item. And we're suffering. Uh, excess cost and hours worked because of the cumbersome setup that they have current. Currently. Uh, so with those four projects coming up. It's gonna increase debt service, supposed to twenty-seven per. Percent over the next two years, three years. A big hit. And all the projects badly needed. The final thing is, we went back and looked at capital spending. Within context of total town spending. And it used to be, well, I can remember back when it was down. In the teens as a percent of total budget. And that's when everything in town was falling apart for those. Uh, it leveled off at about. Twenty percent. And now it appears trending towards twenty-five. It'll spike to twenty-nine and twenty twenty-seven and then settle down as a couple projects are paid off. The, the police and I think one other. So it, that's where the capital portion sits. Uh, I think twenty-five percent. Is a pretty reasonable number looking at a municipal finance metrics. Uh, of a total budget for capital. It might even be on the low side. Uh, we have somewhat higher capital requirements of time. At owing to just our. Geography, we do have winters and snowplows and. Road damage and everything else. So we're pretty well in, in line there. And that's where we ended up. A lot of pages.
It was a lot of work that the committee put into it, every, every budget was looked at very closely. And yet there was also planning from the standpoint of projecting out. And you brought that up with the fire truck that. It got pushed off, but eventually it gets bumped up against other vehicle needs. So trying to level it off is a challenge.
And we have significant fires that are real, they aren't made up. Uh, and they aren't going to go away by wishful thinking either. Or Facebook may have us.
Well, there's that, there's D P W as well, and we're fortunate Joe was able to work out the deal he did on the new grader.
Right.
Yep.
Saved our trust house.
Oh yeah, substantially.
Oh. The road grader was a. Problem sitting out there for a good five years. How it made it this long is another. Any questions?
I just have a question about the grains, to be honest with you, I I I think we're gonna get a little feedback from that because I think people are feeling that, yes, saying. Seventy-five thousand and match it. The other feeling I think we're gonna have is, so you put a stop to the whole project. Because there's no possible way that they're gonna raise seventy-five thousand dollars, it's not a chance of that. So they feel by us saying that, that's our way to say we're putting a halt to it. My opinion about the Grange is that, I think we have a lot more to spend otherwise, I think we did. Put a hundred thousand in, we put the roof on. They know this isn't a fast thing that's supposed to happen. I think we should. Put it on hold right now to be my personal opinion because. And let them raise some money, I I think seventy-five thousand dollars is. A lot of money being put back into that Grange right now and. And I don't think it's ever gonna be used anyways, I don't see how they're gonna raise seventy-five thousand. Unless you're saying if they raise, are they, are you saying if they raise twenty thousand, we'll throw in twenty?
No.
No, you're saying it's.
Because they won't be able to build the. To repair the foundation and without that.
Right.
So it's, it really is, and and it's not a clever trick, it's a straight up honest thing. If you can raise it and fix that. You know, I think they start getting credibility. But other than a bluegrass thing and coffee for seniors or seniors. They've not been able to demonstrate either prior or future use. To the satisfaction of the. People who would. Grant money to them. And if they can't satisfy them. How the heck can they satisfy the taxpayers?
Yeah, cuz if I remember right, that was what came to us is they wanna see the town put money, then they can get these grants if we put the hundred thousand dollars in. And if they're not making that effort, go that way, is that what you're saying, they're not?
The hundred thousand. Wasn't part of our plans. So.
Yeah, it's.
Uh, other people have to take responsibility for that.
Jimmy, just so you know, I spent quite a few weeks down there trying to work with this. The people, they're good-hearted people and they wanna do things, but. They don't take any suggestions on how to raise money, I raised money for my little people. Okay, and you know how we raise money, we raised a ton of money, I gave all the suggestions and I just.
Bob, you got something?
Yes.
Bob DeRosh.
Uh, first of all, I don't know. Have a grant, maybe we're gonna apply for a grant for the windows to be re.
I'm not applying for any grant, the range people.
Yeah, range gate, okay, has that come through?
Yes.
It did.
And ask the property manager for the town whether or not we should put them in.
Yeah, I did speak to that, I spoke with several contractors and looked at the foundation at the rainfall and every contractor I bought to said the foundation needs to be addressed. Whether it's a permanent structurally or or permanent. Deal with water, every contractor tells me, just like I know from my past experiences. That you're gonna start with the foundation, not sort of do anything significant on top and then potentially have to jack the building. You're even have to jack and secure the building to to dig aside and and fix the drainage issue. That still leaves the the question of the foundation of what's gonna be done, there was an engineering permanent looked at in two thousand and twenty-one. And they designed a plan for partially stabilizing the foundation and fixing waterproof needs, I haven't had a contractor to be able to come forward. There are some local ones that are gonna take a look at and give an estimate and all the files. Uh, but that should be a priority, if we're gonna be sinking a lot of money into this building. And putting windows and and making improvements, the foundation needs to be addressed first, in my opinion, and several contractors that would be. Thank you. Jimmy was interested in this, as I showed him the foundation, it's problematic at best. It's the point where I would not even go digging aside right now, cuz if you dig aside right now, I'm only gonna hold the foundation in place with the gravel, it's gonna fall down.
There are, you got a concrete foundation already underneath that?
The concrete foundation underneath that is basically holding the gravel against the foundation, there are a few places they put some jack stands in. But the concrete foundation, the extra work that was done in there, it's not stabilizing the whole building.
Okay, the concrete walls, I mean the inside block, what what Joe's explaining, if he digs on the outside. It could just fall, fall into the ditch, do you know what I mean? It's just rocks and bricks and mixed up stuff.
See, our, when you're smart, watch.
Yeah, when you balance that against. The D P W's new shit, finally getting a decent town hall, not a question.
And.
Yeah, there's another one right there.
Not tonight.
Well, C I P C has open meetings, you know, you're welcome to come, and we have open spots. For people that could get on.
There you go.
So I'll work. And it's dealing with facts, regrettably.
Steve, before you got just a time and question, so I know we talked about the fire engine, but I, sometimes I get confused with the year of the vote and the year of the bond, the debt service starts. So for the fire engines, I know, yeah, yeah. Are you expecting an article in twenty-five on the fire engine or twenty-six, okay, that's what I saw.
Then the delivery. Articles, I think.
I, it's just, you're making, you're making my day, Steve.
And then delivery in twenty-eight.
Well. Fire truck, it's more the. Authority first and. God knows how long it could be becoming that.
Now, they've been trying to come in twenty-six, they're trying to put, you know, a bond. And to do something with the truck, but.
Especially if they go after a used truck.
Yeah.
Twenty-six item.
Good job as always. And human services coordinator Edna Coates.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
So now that Edna is, we're lucky to have Edna only dealing with welfare, so the human resources as well.
I would say once, I don't know, some of you are new, so you may not know how the rule work, so let's go now, some of you may need them fresh. So that's good to read. We have a moment. So that we have this team.
Do you wanna just touch on the high points? Just, just the general summary of this, what?
It basically says that any person in town with Swansea who is poor and unable to. Support themselves, that municipalities are. Required to help assist them in basic needs, like housing, food. Life threat, medications, heat, you know, electricity. And at some point, sometimes water. So that's the basic gist, the bar, and then there's all the steps you have to take to help the person. And it's that responsibility. So we're talking about the budget, I was looking at, you know, the current budget. And probably twenty-four, two thousand and ten thousand.
Like where's that?
I already spent.
Page one.
Yes.
Are there separate printouts?
Yes. This one.
All right, stop listening to her, that's only a few line items.
Yeah, so this year, so far, we've only spent two hundred and one thousand five hundred and sixty.
Can you say that again?
Here you go.
And then can you say that again, two hundred thousand and what?
Two hundred and one thousand five hundred and sixty. And that says about October, and I'm thinking that's about two twenty thousand a month, so you're looking at another forty thousand for the end of the year. Um, so I would. Really love to see the budget increased and I'm telling you why. One, we're seeing more longer term assistance, more people. Um, a lot of the rehab facilities around. Where, and we have the drug problem in the area, just like most of the municipalities. When somebody goes into rehab, they're gonna lose their housing. Because they're not working in there in rehab one to. Two to three months, so now the rehab facilities are advising. The people to come to the town and the town, so they don't become homeless. Needs to pay their rent till they get a home and get back into the workforce in. So I've only had, this is just recently, four people that have gone into rehab. That have got applications, about to assist them so they don't lose their housing. Now, if they lose their housing. Then they get out. There's no place to put them. Housing is still terrible. So that means we have to put them in a hotel. And the hotels around here are about a thousand or one hundred a month. I mean, a week. So you're looking at four thousand a month, so do we. We continue to pay their rent, they'll keep three months, then get out. Most of them have jobs, they go back to their employees, I think, about that, so. Most of them have jobs, they go back to their employees, I think, about that, so far. And they're going to stay in the first paycheck, so. So that's one huge increase I'm seeing.
Michael, is it twenty-three column? Your, your full year?
Yes.
So you're, you're projecting somewhere in the vicinity of two hundred and. Uh. Two hundred and forty, two hundred and forty-five thousand for this year. And, and so that's a, a twenty percent increase over last year, which was. About a. Ten percent increase over the year before. And you're asking for essentially level funding. Based on what your experience is gonna be this year, shouldn't we be looking at?
Increase.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, saying another forty thousand, two to two hundred and fifty-five.
So you're, you'd be looking for two eighty, two eighty-five?
I don't.
No, I understand, but.
Yeah, without any housing, my hands are tied, there's no place to put them.
Right.
We call. Six-page list of every landlord in the area. And while the rents are cheap, they're eleven hundred to eighteen hundred a month for rent right now. For most of the people that persisting, where back a few years ago, seventy-nine hundred, we don't have that. Another concern I have, and you put it in my mind. Um, Perry Lane, Swansea West Park. We've already helped twenty-one percent of those people. And I'm very upset by that. And I will say, I heard from a pretty reliable source. Perryville, not the tenth, the first building, wasn't filling up quickly as they hoped. And then weren't able to approve all the people they wanted to approve, cuz they weren't passing. And they were kind of told. No more background checks, no more credit checks, just get these people in here. And that's what kind of, kind of what happened to. Very, 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 very. So right now, twenty-one percent, I'm not helping them every month, but we've helped twenty-one percent of the. People there. That's a bit disappointing, I think it's gonna keep on happening. And my guess. The police department spends a lot of time there now, more time there than coaches.
We gotta hope it doesn't happen with the other places too.
It's so bad. Yeah, but I think I had to.
We got another, that could be a big problem. Yeah, we told that, we, we told next to the Malo's there was gonna be a working force and where it's. Uh, I get it.
It's not that much, it's maybe a hundred, a hundred fifty dollars cheaper than any other. And everybody heard subsidized housing, and it wasn't subsidized housing, people hear that, think. Oh, we're gonna subsidize credit stuff. It was the building of the facility that was subsidized, to keep the cost down, to keep the rent. It is not subsidized housing, and then all the cap agencies and other places out there assist. Say, oh, you got that subsidized housing, and then why can't you get these people in there? And I'm like. It's not what you thought, plus, everybody heard subsidized. And they took that. Because your rent is gonna be based on, it's not what it is. So people got in there, they can't afford the rent.
Is there mandated section eight, the new housing by the government, the USDA?
Section eight, I'll tell you, there's a fabulous.
Well, what I'm saying is, when they build new construction like that, does how, how. Uh, maybe a percentage of that goes to section eight housing?
No.
Okay, good, thank you.
So that's some of the issues I'm running into, and I've been doing pretty good at not putting people in. The four thousand dollars a month hotel, but it's getting harder. We have one that the worker, the agency's been driving that prison. I don't have any account, but it's mostly what happens. I can't find anything. And I wanna.
Edna, can I ask you a question? What percentage do you think that you, they don't hit the criteria that they're supposed to have? Do you send people? Do you, do you say no to a lot of people?
Possibility have no looking, especially with the traffic right now. They don't have jobs. I'm seeing a lot of what's happening too in this town, and there's. One of, a family, the husband and the wife will have a bank issue. They control our money, they play our savings account, nobody paid the mortgage, and all of a sudden, the other spouse is buying themselves. And, okay, so do I help them get caught up in the mortgage? She gets, or he gets kicked out. Or it was kind of whole family in a hotel, like, what am I concerned about? It's getting really stressful, like the husband and he lives for another two and a half.
This used to be the part of her job that she likes.
But I'm starting to question it, cuz it's very stressful. And I'm real conscious about not. Paying for people that, but it's very difficult to get them off too when they do something wrong. The way the rule is, is if they do something wrong, and you don't give me what I asked for.
Yeah.
I suspend for seven days, but in that seven days, they can do what I asked them to do, and then the suspension's off. So then we keep on going. I told me, I want ten job searches, everybody on my desk. They don't, I suspend for seven days, two days, within two days, they get it to me, the suspension's off, and I have to keep going. It's not much you can.
And what about the rehab thing? When they go to rehab and they come out of rehab. Can they do that? Can they crawl off? And then can they come to you again? How many times can we, do they allow that?
These spots were waiting, there was a traffic issue, there was all these issues that back with, with people there.
It's a whole new, new problem arising.
Absolutely.
Well, it's new for us, but it's been out of the parts of the state. For a long time.
Well, I think what she's, absolutely, I think what she's getting at is the idea of. Okay, you're destitute, you go to the county farm, or you go to your town hall for help, sounded great in nineteen hundred, but now. Even if they're not a resident, if they're in the town, you have to assist them. There's no residency requirement, most of them are, but. Uh. So it's, it's a quaint system, we need some welfare reform from our state representatives.
State representatives and tell some of my stories and. How legal it gets people after the, etc., etc., I'm totally.
I think to kind of answer what Jimmy was getting at before, the, the easy thing for someone in this job is, oh yeah, just approve them and then just keep paying. Edna does not do that, she keeps them accountable, but it's getting harder and harder to hold.
They need something that you can make sign up for job search, and they can prove that they went to like Masial Employment Agency or some of the others. And that they're going every week, and make sure they sign up for other systems, or the. Fuel electric, whatever it happens to be. I definitely make a chunk for you.
Right.
But it's getting. And then more long-term, and not ready, so that's a challenge, whereas before, I work with them on their budget, I can help them get a job. Find transportation, but I can't even find a place to live.
But can there's somebody, is there people that come to you for years? I mean, it, it's.
Just recently, I did happen in fact, when somebody passed with SSDI disability.
Yeah.
It takes two years for SSDI to make a decision on whether that person's disabled. During that two years, they cannot work, so if they can work, then they're not disabled.
Are you kidding?
So for two years, I'm paying these people's rent. I make them sign up for school stamps, so I don't do food, and they can sign up for fuel and electric assistance. But there's still sometimes we have to help a little bit, cuz it doesn't fit all, something they went two years. We do, there is a way to get reimbursed it. I have, I haven't signed SSI reimbursement paper, and we got a check of fifteen thousand something. Last month. But it's only a home, they give us all like eight percent of the.
Eight percent of the total where you get away.
Yep.
No.
That's just how he's eight percent worth. Handling the paperwork that it's. So I do make them jump, I do. Whether I came, when they ask me, when they come, say, oh, I was told you put me in a motel, I'm like, I'm sorry. And I really, really, if I have to, I have to, but I try and.
Well, it is very frustrating to me, cuz I see it every day, I, I'm, I'm at the Best Western and they take them. And I see the same people there, eating their continental breakfast and their room service, and it seems like they're very healthy to go to work, and it's frustrating.
Well, Best Western is, our whole floor is rented in Southwest Community Service, almost empty.
I know that.
But that flows out as well, I can't even get everything.
Wow.
And that floor is like cheaper, cuz it's ugly to the beds.
Yes. Yep, just identify yourself for the record taking.
So you said that, okay, but first of all, the, the apartments on Perry thing there, they weren't subsidized.
Excuse me, could you please identify yourself?
Jessica Sanchez.
Thank you.
So the building of the building was subsidized, but that state.
Tax credits, right.
Tax credits, so then the cost of building, instead of the cost of saying. Two million to build the apartment, and on the cost of one point five or one point two, whatever the amount is. And so then the rent could be a little bit cheaper. But that's all it is, is the rent, one is nine fifty a month, and the other one is. A thousand fifty a month, cuz it costs a little bit more to build a second. So the rents are still way up there, it's not like. Other places where it's based on, you can, we may be subsidized housing.
And they're not getting federal section eight vouchers that are paid for the rent.
Okay, so I know people that applied to, to stay there, but they were, they basically made too much money.
But they're not kids that. So subsidies, you have to earn as little as this and this much.
Yeah.
And if you are over that, you're getting.
Income is supposed to be workforce, but if you're working, you made too much money and moved there. And there's the law, it says we have to help these people. But who was the one that said, just cut all the testing, just get it in there? Who, who made that decision?
I was told from a person that from the outset, plucking applications and all that, they're no longer there. They were very frustrated by that, that that's what happened.
So it was like the manager of the.
And with your patent.
So how is it that we have to follow the law to support these people, and like you said, there, you see a lot of abuse? But then they can turn around and just. Not require what's required.
They don't have to follow it.
That's the problem, right? Like, is there anything we can do about this? Because it's. This is ugly, this, I mean, I don't know what my blood is doing right now, I don't know. And I work in a hotel too, and I see it every day. So I, you know, my family doesn't go on, on vacations and spend much money in a hotel, I can see these people, they, they are.
People that go through emergencies that really, really.
Yeah, and I'm going to find.
That there is a percentage that's just constant.
That was just town state.
Excuse me?
Is that a town state or? Nothing in town either way.
We've had lawyers read it, look over it, and say, this person, this, this, yes, I want you to have a money to get them picked up, and. The lawyer says. There's nothing that says in here, like, to damage the property that you put them in, there's nothing in here that says that they. You know, use rights on, there's nothing in it.
And they don't have to be as wanted, rather than just have to show up and say.
But the most part all about is, uh, but if they come here and they pay one day, say like a coach house. It's, but. They might.
And, and there's something that if the police have interacting with them once, twice, better than reach their. Anything that would give us the ability to say. You're done.
If you want to have to view my car.
No, no, ma'am, I believe now, that's very. There, there must be something that we can do locally. To make it more strange.
Well, years ago, they used to drive them out of town before this time of the day. And you drive from the edge, now I know why. It sounds like they're driving into a lot of towns.
And we get accused by other communities that we don't do our fair share, and that we do just dump them in other towns.
There about, I never understood that, now I understand, though, what you said, if they're here for one day, they become our. Remorquability.
And they just pass another law forward, if they go, whether it's a hospital or rehab, whatever, um. And then they live in that town for a little bit, and they get out, and in fact, it's still considering as one's residence. They was back to Richmond, wherever they went, back to the original, the least I would be definitely. And then for all these people, the law used to say that. If. Thirty days. People could move people into Swansea, say, a coach house, or I put into Keaton in one of the hotels. And after I pick thirty days, now they Keaton, now they Swansea. But that law got changed, and now you keep them, no matter where they need to, in the state. You have to keep paying until they pay for themselves for thirty days. That law is good, that's what you said.
Uh, we don't have that after.
No, it's one of.
No.
We can't say.
Say, we used to have.
We actually can't say no. We actually have to help these, I mean, read some of this, it's unbelievable, just. We need to slide it go and fight this.
That's why I mean, after the assistance, if the, how many, when they get fed up. Did two that I passed, and then.
After a while, these folks get to know all the loopholes.
We should hire them.
So getting back to your budget.
Yeah, so.
Could you talk for a minute about. Uh, what you're doing in terms of trying to help people with their mortgages, so that. And, and with their taxes, so we have some better understanding of what the scope of that is.
Taxes, I have mortgages, like, there's, you know.
But if you, if you could talk about the taxes, because i- if it's gonna come to this board, it's usually because of a tax lien. Uh, there are other communities that grant relief. We've, we've typically, Kevin's done a great job with getting people on a monthly budget and all of that, and. And we've worked with them to try to relieve some of the penalties and interest as long as we see the progress going forward. So what, what, do you recommend any changes there, or do you? You feel we're doing is adequate?
I haven't got that, too many calls, yeah, taxes. I do have one, I'm a regional, it's all wrapped up in one of those. You know, you get money from your mortgage.
Oh, reverse mortgage disaster.
That's the only one I have, so while, uh, what we can do is working. And normally I would, if you know it. You were gonna take this tax, but if I, would look at it, I have to be ready.
So then, getting back to the mortgages.
Mortgages, I actually have about five sits a year that I have in mortgage for. A few months to kind of, uh, because they really take them home.
Mm-hmm. So we're holding off more pleasure?
Mortgage a lot is that we can put a rent on their home, so someday you do get money back.
And the house goes to sell.
And that's because people closure and they're gonna owe me a lot of.
And then when it's down, they're about it.
So.
We get the taxes out of it, may, maybe our legislator could work on that piece to get to municipal level a little bit higher.
Well, we've given them a lot tonight to work on, so you taking notes?
Give me, give me till Friday.
We can also vote and classify ourselves in front of those committees.
Some of the municipalities are going through the type of things that might have to be dealt with, and. How we almost have like, you know, we was to get them. As long as they do anything I ask, and like I said, if they don't, I suspend them for seven days, then if they still don't. I suspend them fourteen days, and then if they still don't, then I might be able to spend another six months. But that, that is my plan. But usually, do something between seven days and fourteen days. So then you have to be staying there.
What's your trend um as the years progress from January to December? Uh, are we seeing, is October higher than year over year? So.
But I'm seeing a bigger trend in the rehab thing that I've never done.
So what what impact will that have on your budget for next year?
Twenty thousand.
Eight twenty four thousand, I'd say, if I get some more. Depends how many more I'm, you know, they're going through that.
So if we bumped it from two forty four to. Two ninety, that would give you the twenty percent that you're experiencing this year. Is is that realistic?
I've been pretty close to all my budgets except for one year where the market. So I think we'll be okay.
What are you saying you'd be okay level funded or are you saying you you need additional twenty percent? Well, you're you're. You're you're gonna end. Okay, cuz you're gonna end this year two fortyish somewhere in there. I know you do. We all know that.
And I'm wondering if another Swansea can build Mr. Frank, but let them in. Just like with a motel, they should pay them bill, but. People that he let into apartments, they're not working and are not supposed to be there. But we take on their burden. We take their burden on. I agree and indeed. And I I think I think there must be a way to push back. I'm hoping there's a way to push back.
Anything for us, Edna? Good job.
Thank you.
Samantha Dutra. Did I say that right? Road maintenance agreement?
Is that one of the guest of honor this evening?
This has continued somewhat from our meeting a couple of weeks ago before Thanksgiving, so we have.
Oh, this is Christian Hill.
Correct.
She wanted to put a driveway onto the.
Off the summer portion of.
Yeah, so my understanding was it was kind of go on to the dirt part of the road, which we don't maintain in the winter, right? And her request is that she would maintain that section of the road if she could connect her driveway. To answer the road. And I think we came up with that, we felt that it would be um. We felt against it, that we were afraid that she wouldn't maintain the road and if she didn't, right? And now we're back there, you have another option first?
Um, I'll do the cast, uh, do a letter and send them then, yes, some other options. Hopefully with a solution would be great. Move into the uh ones.
Um, Joe, maybe you can relive the other option that you related to us, if there was another option, wasn't it to get on to the main?
You know, she already asked Ms. Booster's contractor that the driveway can be extended. Uh, people that want going on to the road because it's it's. The issue itself is not just maintaining the road, it's allowing a private citizen to maintain a public road, it's no different than a class six road. It's biologically generally do not allow buildings anymore on class six roads as they're not maintained. But it's more so than just allowing them to maintain the road, it's what happens in the spring when it's generally a muddy road, it doesn't get used all the time. When an oil truck gets stuck, we're not maintaining the road in 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 the closed season. Who's responsible and that oil truck goes up and gets stuck, a mail post office truck gets stuck or somebody else thinks the road is open, you think it. So it creates a lot of issues uh in in that sense, it's not so much the curb cut. It's the allowing the private citizen to maintain the road. So always one of the questions I had for the contractor initially is can that driveway be extended and just. Get to the end of the property without having to deal with any portion of the summer maintained road.
So this is one type of road we have in Swansea that it's maintained in the summer, not the winter, it's a classification for that road, right? What's it called?
Well, it's a summer cottage road, they call it. So much five, that's the criteria falls under, but essentially in the winter time it turns into a cottage road where it's not maintaining.
Can you show me where this is the outside?
Yeah, the road comes up on the end of maintenance is about here, so.
Right here.
Yeah, and it continues on.
And then this is dirt.
This is dirt, yes, dirt also.
This is a dirt and she wants to build over here.
Yeah, most specifically recall.
What was I suggesting maybe maybe we could have caught, she could have connected to who?
Well, I initially asked, like I said, I understand that the contracts here tonight. Had more information about that, but I initially asked, can you just extend the driveway that accesses off the classified road to get into the property? And then alleviate any issue on the town without a private citizen maintaining a road.
So what what would happen is the cost of the driveway to extend it on the existing road that's already there. Um, is in the facade of like hundred twenty thousand dollars versus a shortcut off the seasonal road. Somewhere in the facade of like twenty five thousand. Well, so it's a significant cost for the ADU to. Put a road in there, um, what we were talking about yesterday was maybe we do a summer driveway, so it's a seasonal. Driveway off the summer road and it's her mother's home. And we were gonna do a nature trail from house to house anyway, so she, if there's a storm, which. Few of our behind here, you know, you only see a couple a year, you know, that's really bad. She could park her mothers if she's up that way.
So you're basically offering that the building would be built where it was proposed to be built with no curb cut? Because the curb, the issue, the issue, the issue is access on a non-town maintained road. And and asking or giving permission to a landowner to maintain a portion of road, that's the issue. So if you can, if you can park uh in the existing driveway and have a nature path to walk to the. ADU or DADU with no curb cut, there's no reason for us to be here. The whole issue is the curb cut. But but why not alleviate the issue? Because the issue is 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 giving permission to a private landowner to maintain a portion of a town road, that's what the issue is. And if you can park in the driveway in the summer, you can park in the driveway in the winter. And you can walk the nature walk and we we have no issue. That's that's really where it comes down.
Sure, I understand. And one of the things like I explained to Ms. Dutcha before, we're making these decisions, it's, yes, you have an individual request. But these issues come up, especially with the lack of land now, these issues come up constantly with roads that aren't maintained for the town. So we have to take these into consideration, not just with the individual request, how that's gonna impact future ones. For example, there was somebody that would come in here as of last year, the year before, year before. They wanted to build a house on class six portion of Palahill Road and they were gonna maintain this section of road and upgrade it themselves while the floods in. Two thousand twenty three, the entire road's gone. And if that would have been allowed, this is a prime example of what kind of nightmare would would have been for both property owner and for the town. So that's what we make these decisions on, it's not just solely your your circumstances and how it impacts the town in all these circumstances. And just it's just not ideal and and I would not recommend a those select or to allow a private citizen to maintain a road. It's not just the plowing, it's the mud season, it's okay, a tree falls down in the middle of the winter time, it's just, there's too many issues with it. In my opinion, it's solely my opinion and recommendation of the board.
And what about a curb cut though for us, for a suburb?
I would not, it's the same thing, how do you enforce that? How do you enforce that? Somebody else buys the property and now it's being used all the time. Um, I I would not entertain that. And and Mr. Hartbacher brings up a great idea, you're gonna use a nature path to walk in the winter time, it's gonna be down easy to walk in the summertime.
I get.
How about moving it closer to the house? Gators cheaper than a hundred twenty five an hour.
Uh, so the problem is the property's slow to like eighteen, which basically. Repitch, so it's. You cut a road through there, no matter whether it's a nature trail or lawn, drainage, if there is water, we want that now. We gotta make sure that that's all addressed properly as well. You know, keep the cost down for the for the second goal. Idea is straight up uphill, you know, you push snow down, you push snow off. If you're not excited, I mean, I'm excited.
The issue is a non-town maintained road.
Sure, no, we stand with you.
Sure.
The areas, um, you know, we used to sell those kids. When it's snow.
So it seems like you.
But there are seasonal rampages on that road, is I know most of that property is is owned by. Different tree owners and whatnot, so there's not a lot of residential on there, but there are a few bodies drive.
There's one and it's owned now by Cogan Bines when they were just recently trying to sell that and they were dealing. Yeah, that is the only one that's there that. See, they're owned by Cogan Bines or some affiliation of Cogan Bines, but when they were initially trying to sell that property. This was the whole channel. Yeah, so that that was the reason why, and I don't know how that come about, but I was told, told unofficially, Cogan Bines either owns it or it's being donated with that.
Yes, Gareth.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, could I ask the gentleman to identify himself, the one with the hat on?
Jason Denell.
Jason Denell, thank you.
Yeah. Years ago, it was allowed, there's still in the deeds and they need to come progress today. People are allowed to build on, they were allowed to build on class six roads. Which which aren't maintained and they're responsible for, and it's like I said, just especially when we're seeing these flood damages that comes up. Um, and and.
That would must have been washed out, it's one of the major roads in town.
Completely rebuilt, but it's still not at that, because of the narrowness of trees and it's still not at that class. By spec and take a lot from property owners. Make it that. No, Christian Hill was completely wiped out. Essentially, not completely rebuilt, but pretty close to it, so being a fund.
How close to the road could the nature trail be? So that it's not near right away. Because that's relatively flat.
What I think we'll do is if we're not gonna be allowed a curb, maybe we're gonna propose a driveway. Down low, parallel right to the road. Not so long as it's on my property, I don't believe there's a setback for it, but like, that's gonna be the easiest. The most expensive is the uh with a ledge. And I think her mother's house, the leach field is up high, so. We can't put a road across the leach field, so I just gotta check into like where her drill well is and see the setbacks on it. But I will literally just do a U-turn and punch a road right above. A driveway parallel to Christian Hill Road, that's gonna probably be the most expensive way to do it. At that point, it'll be on her property, then we can do a U up to where the. I would say. Because going up and continuing her managed property and going up high, it's the 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 mountain up there starts to pitch at like twenty five degrees. Then we saw some, that business is letting off, so. Lasting, it gets expensive.
Sound good to you?
Yeah, I'll work with you on that, come up with a plan, like I've said in my email. Do what I can to help you, but I just, just like I said, that initial plan, it's just too problematic, the more I look into it, it's very problematic.
And even if there are holes, it's gonna need a, basically, it's gonna be like the energy car. All it's, so then we, then we'll develop abilities.
Yeah, that's.
So, you know, whatever you're talking.
No, like I said, once you're, once you're maintaining. Amazon, Amazon, you name it.
It's just sad.
So the well's across the street, it's on the other side of the road.
There, there's a well along on the block land that is relevant. It's like an old dug well, there's a tree growing through, it, there's no water in it. So her mother must have drilled well, which uh my, my siblings here is gonna try and locate through the state.
One sixty six Christian Hill.
But there's, there's like a hand dug. Like an old fire well.
I didn't realize how old this plan was, that I was looking at. Till now, it's pretty old, so I get it.
Yeah, I tell you, the the land is pretty heavy for us, it, you know, there's probably maybe a. Sixteen large white lines in there and other than that, it's just. Wow, all of them. Six inch. Sixty inch trees everywhere.
Well, I don't have a parking space, it doesn't have to be parallel to them. In front of.
Yeah, as long as it's not in the town right away, you can have a parking spot. That's fine, I just.
Part of the issue, my my mother's driveway, it is co-owned by Timberland Meadows and Jeremy said, yeah. He doesn't even like using it. So.
Is there something in the deed that gave you access most of the time? So, there's nothing in the deed.
Like this this parcel, so I'm not asking for a subdivision, as you all know, goes to take their own mother.
Would you give her a curb cut off of the maintained portion?
If there's room for it, yeah.
The the pavement ends like in front, I sent like as many pictures as I could, it ends like in the middle. Of my mom's property or house. Why don't know that means that's where it really ends. What did they turn?
Get back in a lot of driveways.
In my mom's?
I hope it's your mom, but I think the other one.
Oh, the newer, the Timberland one.
Uh, there's a property that.
Yeah, that's.
Summer grounds up, so.
It was, if you sold it.
So I could still have, so part of the issue is the lack of like usability of her parking area. I'm not always supposed to be using, and we have something in front of the ADU as long as it wasn't dry.
As long as it's not coming off the road.
Well, yeah, you cannot, we can't just go hard up there, no.
Where pavement is.
Somewhere in that vicinity, yes. Yeah, exactly, if you were gonna get a new curb, yes.
So it has to be wherever the pavement.
Somewhere in that general vicinity. Like I said, come up with something, I'll take a look at it, but it has to be in that general vicinity.
So the summer. Summer, like seasonal use, cuz. Summer, like seasonal use, because I'm not gonna park here, you know, like, I'm willing to like work with whatever if we work.
We don't, we don't issue curb cuts on non-maintained public roads and and that, like I said, doesn't.
You enjoy seasonal use now.
You could seasonally use the road portion, but.
Right, but then how if I get to. I think you're like, if I can extend her driveway, how would I get to my D A U without? Like where would I park if there's an issue with the parking already?
Yeah, there's, you can't park a road, there's nowhere to park that road, that's right.
Is there anything that says you can't drive that, but the literature feels?
You can drive it, but you can't.
But if it's not being deemed, it could be parked.
It's parked now, I mean, you still count right away.
I know, I understand, I understand, when I was in high school, people.
Yeah, a lot of things were different.
Snowmobiles pack it down pretty good.
Yeah, all that, things are easy. And then comes spring, so it's gonna be a better shape, much season this year because of gravel, but because it's not maintained, it's a mess in the spring.
There's no way to put like a, um, a turnaround, like it wouldn't be technically a driveway, like a turnaround, just so I can stay there.
That would be a curb cut.
It would still be a curb cut.
Yeah.
You're that older.
Right.
You wanna look at the end of the town maintained and see? If there's any way we can do a curb cut there.
It is, like I said, it is pretty tight, I'll take a look at it, it's possible.
Just telephone pole right there, too, utility pole. But listen, what they're talking about is is additional curb cut, basically right where the utility pole is, so they'd have to move their pole. Which they might be willing to do.
Yeah, I think the, there's an existing pole at the end. That's kind of, and there would, there's gonna be three more poles that will have to go. On their property on the other side of. Where you guys did, they swayed all the drainage, they, they would have poles on the. Give me, replacing a pole with two more new ones, and then we'll do.
I need to talk to one nationwide who's very wanting to look at the bonds, like what? The bonds would look like, um, just so if that would be an option. Like this fact, but clearly one least, um, is that the only thing they do for this pay of sixty zero is a ten dollar time a year. And, um, if they go beyond that, they need a contract written by the town before they would begin to go. And the village and that nation, like I said, but they couldn't even fill up the bond form for this town or the D P W. For what they have access to, they said they would also need a specific type of bond and a contract to give me an accurate code. But I wanted to make sure I looked into as many options like as possible, like anything. Because my mom isn't able to look like she's here, and I'm rolling, so I really just, I don't know what else to do, but. I need to be able to work up here, I do have a license to practice in New Hampshire, I do a liability insurance, but that's if I self-patients up there. Um. I have like a million aggregate and thirty million. But I don't. I wanna make sure like it's less I go into town myself, obviously, I just. I don't have any other options, I can do.
Yeah, I don't think. If we allow the use of the town road, unmaintained road, then you'd need a bond. But where we're not doing that, you're not gonna need the bond, so. Right, but I think if we could work on some kind of curb cut closer to your mom's house. And then do that road, parallel to the town road, drive, drive, sorry. That might be your best option. But Joe will work with you guys on that.
Is there a reason why that road's not maintained, is it because there's no, there's no resident, her, her mom's property is the last residential in town?
Partially that, partially the design of the road, just because there's decent gravel on it to maintain that in the winter with the switchback. And how narrow it is with the trees, it it would. It could be easily done as far as the construction aspect of it, but the right away to make the road safe for travel would take a significant. Bit of private property, so.
Um. Well, similarly, where the sign says the only sign, non-maintained, so I am wondering, is there a way to. My mom, you know, like we are crossfairs here, like I'm, I thought she loves the community, I don't want to displace her. And I really just wanna take care of her, and she's gone, um, because. The pavement end pathway, it would be a lot easier to make a parking space if the pavement actually covered. Her home, I know the pavement technically goes beyond the driveway, but is there any with the road that where I could be maintaining, but that I could. Essentially like pave a little bit more, where it covers the totality in front of her house? Because as of right now, it's kind of like. Javvy, like, you know, it's in, in front of her house ending.
I would have to look at where it is to look, to make a recommendation on the board on that. There has been some storm damage there from two thousand.
I know.
Not twenty three, some of it was covered under twenty three, but the initial damage to the asphalt wasn't covered by being with twenty one.
Yeah.
There are new overets out there, but it's the paint, but. If, like I said, without, when it looks on the ground, right, like I had offered up, uh. I can't really expect that, I don't know how far away that would be, so.
Would you be willing to come?
Yeah, like I said, if you email to you, like, if you start, I'd be willing to give you the contract or anything.
Yeah.
And talk about, point in the right direction.
Okay, you have to take a look, see if it's. Wouldn't it be possible if we could come up with another plan like a.
You may not have to come back, or if it can be, if it can be considered on the maintained portion of the road.
Yeah.
I can authorize the curb cut, this landlord doesn't get involved with that, like, it's what we get at.
That was one of the missions that I found.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard about that, that, that is, I think it's covered, like it's too long, easy, but I think. Within storms or, you know, like what the town did, some of the drains were, they might have covered it up, I don't.
No, I wasn't involved with that, we definitely wasn't talking about, it was, it was washed out through there pretty deeply, was it?
Yeah, it was.
Definitely a drip well. Pretty.
Nobody knows.
And where, where's the pump in her house, is it down south?
I haven't been, yeah, so that's something.
And have you pulled the deeds on the property, or I always say, you have all the driveways?
But because I got all the information on that property, it's hard because I needed to go. And the only, there was a hole on like the property. That shared part of her driveway, like that's a weird situation, because it's. The two driveways kind of are off, and so that's shared, but there was an easel in there of. Skidder road, which is where I walked out of the city of my dear. Put a road up here and stuff. If, you know, seven hundred and fifty feet or forty five, I mean, I mean. Ish. And it looks like to me, now, my image is weird, this is why. Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit of water, it all it takes is a, you know, a cell storm or something, they give us six inches of rain, and if I don't do a road, uh, drainage. That's why.
Well, I'm just, in my experience, even a lot of the older places, any shared driveways, there was always something, I haven't found one that was just gone by verbal, even back in the day when these were gone. And then if you've been, then if you've been, you'd have to consult, I'm not getting, if you've been using it for this long. Sure, there, there's some legal ramifications as far as you have access to that.
Yeah, I think, I think going behind the month is how it's bad, I should, it's not. I think if anything, I mean, we'll, I'll get at that, at the end of that whole set. And just follow the road, you know, ten feet. Or however, I almost, when you guys read it, the road, it's straight to a lot of them. So hillside also did a huge out there.
Yeah.
The drain, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was there at the end of the year.
So that's part of the reason why it washed out. Yeah, well, yeah, we would take, what I suggested to you was take a look at it, come up with a plan and then reach out to me.
I will.
And I'm glad to come up and take a look at it.
Thank you, thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Samantha.
All right, well, uh. You guys are okay with it?
Well, actually, do you wanna jump to the, maybe we can get Joe out here.
We'll go to old business under a Weber Hill Roads quote stabilization project.
So Steve mentioned that we have some additional information, then Joe pulled aside even. Um, this evening, there's more kind of additional, which is some good news variety, but included in the package, uh, that he has printed, I didn't have it on Monday. Um, a memo from Ben Dryer with Underwood and the years.
Ninety nine.
See, I didn't.
I think you said ninety nine.
Uh. So the information Joe provided. So we basically have three, at least in my mind, three buckets of reasons the cost is increasing. One is the condition, looking down the groundwater and unsuitable, um, and that. That's eastern kind of end of the area, so we put in the drainage lane, so that's the unanticipated subsurface, roughly a hundred.
It was a lot more drainage, though, too, it was a significant amount of shot ledge and rock. And a, a basin that we actually provided, that we, we had, uh, stocked. So that's just to stabilize the bottom and deal with the water issues.
So that's pretty much a sure thing, the other two are both still being worked on. Uh, so Gordon Services, the contractor, had provided cost increase information, which is where the one ninety on the M S E wall modification comes in. But Underwood is still working without, I'm trying to flesh out some of those numbers. Um, and then the other piece is related to the winter conditions, so basically because it's a vegetated wall. Uh, basically big bags of earth are eventually gonna have seed and plants growing through them to stabilize. Uh, we were going under the assumption that those are gonna have to stay basically without freezing the rain, so there's gonna be a lot of outside tears. And costs associated with that, but then Joe just got a call that that might not be the case.
Yeah, I mean, I'll get some screen focused there. So as you know, there's our engineer working on it, there's the engineer from the manufacturer of the materials. So initially it was told that they have to, once they start this, keep it from freezing. They have new information from one of the engineers on the vegetated wall that as long as they're putting these bags in place. They, they need to be kept warm, but once they get them in place and they literally get back, like stepping on them, once they're back to, they can freeze and it doesn't matter. So that will alleviate having a run of grounds here twenty four seven through the duration of the project. The wall is being backfilled with stone now instead of granular material, they're also saying that the stones does not have to be heated as well, because initially they were told it did. So need to get that documented, that from the manufacturer, that that is the case, but that would be a significant decrease in the winter conditions. There'll be no running heater on the weekends, if they, if you only had to be caused, we'd give them those backs, even while they're on the stock, not just gonna be a dry storage, because once they freeze, you can't do those. It's still getting hatched out.
So we're, we're hoping that it's gonna be a good amount less than the four eighty, I don't wanna say that that's a worst case, because I think I've said that on board, things have gotten worse, so. Uh, so I don't, at this point, I don't think we need an approval on the four eighty, um. Because I'm hoping to get more information by next meeting, but we would like authorization to sign a change order with the. Basically ironing out the finances by the next, either the next meeting or soon. Uh, but work has resumed, so we wanna make sure to keep that moving. So I think that's. At this point.
Yes, Bob.
Couple of questions. Uh, first of all. Gordon Services. And where do they locate that?
Jeffrey, I'm sure.
Not Sullivan?
They have a location in, I think that's like Key, right?
Key, yeah, Key and Ross, or.
Uh, they, how can you stand the job so late? Design issues, design issues.
Well, we've been at, we've been at late too, so I think it was, the bid award was in August or so. And initially we looked at, um, we want, the budget was tight already, and we wanted to look at a cost saving measure, so we. They suggested that we look at basically a block wall instead of the vegetated wall, turned out. Initially that was gonna be more expensive, depending on how these things flush out, it might have been close to the same cost, but. We came to a point a few weeks ago where we had to make a call to try to at least get the wall started before. Um, winter, so we, we went with the, kind of say the original design of a vegetated wall.
I'm going to, uh, try to finish that before I run this out, or no, I think we'll take it.
It's gonna depend on the weather. Do as much as we can.
Like. Why, why do you contract all of a sudden this probably?
For the design, working out the differences between the block and the vegetated wall.
I guess the only complaint that I had on the project, he, he left that, he left, uh, where it looks like it was covered by a plant. But there's a grain on the road, and that's pretty weak there. I would say that was definitely a traffic accident, that road. That's my last one, we complained about that.
What, you're pointing it on as well?
Right, uh, remember that drain goes underneath the road, it's, it's split very inch, twenty one, I think it's.
It's down that deep. I don't think it's down that deep, but I saw it on the shore, it was well.
You sure it was something?
Yeah, no, it's not that deep, downside it is, but the, but the manhole cover itself is.
Well, that's what, what on you, yes?
There's a cover on it. Not great, but there's a cover on it.
It looks bigger, even though there's somebody walking off the road there, that, you know, it's.
It's not the same grade as the subgrade there. Essentially maybe a little bit lower.
I just know it was, what, what did they, they put a steel plate over it totally?
It was a plate over it. It was a small plate over it, the cover, yeah.
No, I said, the, the actual area is pretty sized. It goes from nothing.
But it's not the same grade as what that drain that was there before.
I think we're all gonna go two slots, two other spots.
No, but I think we're about in the same area, it's kind of easy.
It's a construction area, Bob, so it's not done yet.
Yeah, I rea- I realized.
When it's done, it'll be done.
My whole point was why, between him leaving and coming back, why wasn't that? That, that hole there properly packed, and so it wasn't a safety accident.
In their opinion, it was, and I didn't see any issue, but I take the post to look at it, but I didn't see any issue, but. There's very drop offs on it, I can dig it right on down, we got drop off a lot to get them out.
Aren't there orange barrels, so, Joe, Joe?
There are cones and barrels.
There's no law, there's no law. There are no law, those orange cones right off there, but.
I'll do it, Jim.
It's getting warm.
Too warm there, Jessica?
Jessica is freezing, that's why she's trying to wind up.
His feet are cold. You're wearing short sleeves, Jimmy, it's December.
You got a cold behind you.
It's seventy one.
Get the pot in here.
Well, I fully understand the, the, uh, non-municipal issues in this. That, that kind of goes with.
So our bottom line is, we're hoping maybe closer that bottom one ninety goes away, some of that one ninety goes away.
Both of them one nineties go away potentially.
Oh, how does both of them go away?
Well, I didn't say go away, but.
But some of them, oh, oh, how are we saving on the top one ninety?
So, for example, one of the, one of the changes is the bags, initially the contractor was going to fill the bags with earth. Either on site or one of their facilities, now they're going to be filled in either Western Pennsylvania or Canada where they're coming from. So the contract, the other contractor, the supplier is gonna be filling those, so like Underwood wanted to make sure. Well, you had a cost for, the contractor had a cost for filling, is that in both places, so stuff like that, but they're trying.
They'll check their numbers on us, actually. And we gotta keep these so they don't freeze.
They have to keep them free, yeah.
Yeah, once they freeze, they can't be put in place, but they learned today, as long as that can be documented, that once they get in place, they can breathe. Which is substantial. Yeah, because you were mentioning to me, they have, so the heaters and everything, and they're literally burning up money. That's fantastic. Oh, that's very good. Well, that wouldn't be too bad, considering what we thought. We started high, so. That's a big, that's a, is it month work to now, as you were?
I know, right?
Yeah.
Don't get those started.
I'll forget about it.
My, my feet aren't long, I mean, legs aren't long, and I'm breathing them. I think I'll try.
So we don't have to do nothing about this, we're gonna sit back, keep going until we get more information about this money?
The authorization to sign the change order once it's finalized, and hopefully, and then we'll iron out where all the dollars are coming from, what the dollars are, hopefully next week.
So we're not going to make no motion to.
No.
We're gonna have the motion to.
Yeah. Authorize me to sign the change order, because we know at least a hundred is happening.
I'd say. Okay, so I'm prepared to make that motion.
Second? Motion made in second, and anything further? On favor, say aye.
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 Anything else for Joe before we let him escape?
Anything for us?
Come on.
Crew back to a hundred percent yet?
Yeah, we saw them keep over their back, thankfully, with snow coming, but yeah. So we got snow right down, right?
Yeah.
This will be the first one for the goggles, second one. Second one, certainly did, we already got self-delivered. Because we have stuff in the van. From last year?
Yeah.
Well, the good thing is, we got plenty of sand. People working very hard on that. I went there, witnessed it and looked at it, and I think Joe saved his, saved a lot of money. Sitting in our own sand, right, then it's probably three or four years of sand, now we won't have to do anything, we're good. That's right. So that's great, that's good news, good job, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if it's okay with you guys, I'm going to punt on the uh new business and old, the rest of the old business, and we'll jump ahead of the public input, so these folks can. Yeah, but they're loving this. I know. Bob, Bob, I had, was he sleeping? On a.
He has two hours delay.
You're up.
Hello, good morning. I'm Bob on that, and you need to. I've been following the discussion on Facebook as well, and just want to thank you guys for all the work you do, and I know you're looking at everyone. I know that it's a hard job, you guys are really hard about it, because I took notes while you guys were reacting, because I didn't want to forget everything. And I know that we're all squeezed for paying stuff, but, you know, we live in a safe community that really prioritizes children, I think that's important. And we also should remember, our tax rate's nineteen dollars. King's tax rate is thirty-three dollars. We're average for the region, it's high. But what do we get? That's a question, what discussion we should all have together. Last night, I was at the select, or the school board and the budget committee had a discussion on the, on the budget. Uh thirty nine, thirty-nine million dollar budget. Nobody from the public is there. So hopefully, folks will attend the deliberative sessions that are coming up. And we can talk more about why the school budget's going up this year by three point eight four percent. And uh. One thing I want to say, we're worried about kids coming from Winchester. That's still a discussion that that hasn't really happened yet, the the contract ends in twenty-seven. If we actually get a contract with Winchester that actually benefits the school, because we'll be making like increases opportunities, educational opportunities as well. So I wanted to say, you guys. Um, because I know you're getting a few. For doing all the hard work.
You know, it's very nice of you to come in and say that, it's well taken, because I'm new, and I sit here. And.
And he makes it.
And I sit here, and I, I was on the other side, and now that I see this out, I have to say something. This town is unbelievable, there's so much more to it, and there's so much hard work that's involved in this. That I'm learning every day, things like this mean a lot, and that's why I got a little frustrated when I started reading these negative things, and that's why I spoke tonight. And said, hey, we're here, come on down, there's all the opportunity to see us and speak to us. And I think we get rid of the negative stuff that's on this Facebook, we can grow and we can solve these problems. It's not going to go away, at least like you said, it tracks.
I would just encourage, maybe a little more communication as we come closer to the delivery sessions and the budget discussions. Encourage people, you know. Just come and listen, or maybe just come pick up a book and look, you know, where all your money's going, because it's all, it's already there. And, you know, like, like I said, this is a great place to raise a kid. I have a thirteen-year-old kid, me and my brothers went to school in the Platteburg School District, it's been around for fifty years. Swansea's here, it's a safe place, I'm willing to pay for it.
Now, you know, when the fire station is front there, we're going to have open houses at the firehouse. So people can see the condition of that firehouse. And that committee worked extremely hard to get into the cost that we publiced for it. But it's important though that the majority of people want that firehouse. Yes, they do, but unfortunately.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Before you sit down though, Bob, I think there's some questions that people have asked, there is a budget hearing. And that's in January, Michael might have the date. There is a deliberative session for for both the school and the town. We typically get about fifty people, half of them town employees, to the deliberative session, a very similar mix for the budget session. And and those are real opportunities to make a difference, and and Steve Biddle at the beginning of the meeting mentioned that. There was an entourage that came last year. Uh the CIP committee had zero aligned. The uh, the Grange, and and that group was able to uh insta- or vote to have the budget in, not the budget, but the capital reserve. Increase by a hundred some odd thousand dollars. So they made a difference. If if you've got the forces, you also have the opportunity, which I really don't want to encourage, but we don't have a budget committee. So there's also the opportunity to substantially cut or increase the town budget. But in the case of the school, they do have a budget committee, so you have the opportunity to sway.
Committee.
Sway. Sway it up or down by ten percent. So there are, there are real opportunities.
I think it's important, you may not have, you know, you may not be able to change the budget at all, but. The folks, the school administrators, these guys, all the staff, they work hard on these budgets, they put a lot of work into these things. And when they're asked to shave stuff or asked to keep increases down, they take it seriously, and the the school is actually. Um been. On track to keep the per pupil cost lower than the actual state average, it's actually been going down, they've been doing such a good job. That they've actually been bringing the per per pupil cost down, what's driving costs is health insurance, well, thirty-four percent in two years. Uh special education out of district. So these things are adding to the increase, they actually had eleven budget except for the health insurance and the special education. And that's what's driving. The school budget. And, you know, we go to these meetings and we listen and we learn and we see how hard these people work on these budgets, I think, which is showing them respect.
Well, the department heads worked extremely hard under Michael's leadership here to to do just that, and and some of them are completely out of their control. Stuff, pay payroll. We can't.
I don't know how.
We have so many.
Health insurance went up eleven percent this year, I don't know how they, thirty-four percent in two years. I don't know how you, how you, and that's, that's not sustainable. But.
It's a challenge.
Yeah. Thank you.
But just to give you an example on participation, the year that the bond was was passed for the school in twenty twenty-two. We didn't have any discussion at the deliberative session, I begged people, are you sure you don't want to talk to them?
Everybody wanted to go on.
Everybody did until they didn't. And.
Seventeen percent of the people.
Yes, it's, to your point, so few people show up, and and they're the ones that make the difference. Because once it hits the ballot, it hits the ballot.
I'm glad we got a good school coming.
Well, the infrastructure costs and the facility costs will will decrease.
And I think also I want our town to be uh child-friendly. Who really wants to be child-friendly, we got a great school system.
On what Ashley's doing with the recreation department, what what she's done in a few years, especially during COVID.
Beach is wonderful lately.
She's very passionate about that.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman. Point of order, Mister Chairman. Could I have that gentleman's name, please?
Bob, I'd that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
I'm good, pal.
Well, Bob, come on. I agree with you, you're going to, on Tom, Tom and Bob.
All in.
Town meeting.
Work, work a lot, uh standing, we're literally. And everybody got their. Like, we sense it, you know. I don't, I don't know.
That would help.
We should, so we, you know, I don't have that.
Floor, bleachers.
There's a way to change it back if you want.
Well, we tried that. Molly Glidin stood outside the polls, vote no, vote no. But yes, you're right. Town, town meeting is a terrific way to have that interaction, that brings the community together, as Jim spoke earlier. And I remember Henry Johnson saying, they they have their arguments and then go down and have dinner, whatever. And it was, it was a great time to be a part of the town, I suspect it wasn't here, but. I suspect it was.
And so finally watched Stacy call.
Oh, yeah, Stacy was already, yes, he was, God rest his soul.
I can run one issues just to get a little bit hot. Stacy was saying we started bringing up on the Jones or mentioning how nobody would help him somehow about something. Just to lighten up the, the atmosphere.
Sure.
He was good.
It's a special town, a real gift.
Any other public input? Seeing none, we'll go back to new business, consideration of applying for a housing champion status. So is that?
Yes, there's a. Seventy-nine, I have a first trial. Uh so it's basically the legislature created a new distinction, which is the housing champions' status. And it does have some, that is a scoring criteria, which I think maybe was part of the. Little bit of the confusion, because I know it got discussed with the planning board, and I think maybe it was. Outlined as if it was, we had to do these things, I don't think there's necessarily anything that the town would have to do, at least not. At this point, down the road, they might, there might be suggestions, and if we want to do them, we could or not, but it's largely, I think, recognizing. That Swansea has done, I think, more than its fair share overall compared to a lot of neighboring communities. Uh so recognizing that effort, and also, more importantly, I know this, this group uh loves grants, and it would open up opportunities for. Um grant opportunities, so my example that. I think got in here would be potentially, you know, we know we have water and sewer needs, and we know we have a mill, that's uh that would need those. Those uh infrastructure services to have potential apartments, I think it could open up some possible grants for something like that, so. I don't mean any decision necessarily at this point, now you didn't have a chance to um review the memo, I was thinking it got finalized yesterday, but. Um it's, you know, an option, and talked to Andrew uh Dorsett, let the invest in each group and. Throw the ashamed uh with everything that Swansea's done, if, you know, they created this designation and they weren't a part of it, so. It's not saying we're going to approve new projects, there's no requirement to do that, if they meet the ordinance and go through the process. Uh they'd be treated the same, wouldn't um, wouldn't be obligating us to like approve new projects or anything, but. Uh I guess mainly recognition and opening up grant opportunities.
Which we desperately need.
Which we desperately need.
So is this an executive summary? Or? So does it show what we are short on and what we're strong on?
So I didn't include the application that we submitted, or that. I didn't include an application, but we could. Um but like, so if you look through the program overview, they'll say like, you have to have a specific ordinance for this, we might not have a. Unaffordable housing ordinance, but we have affordable housing.
Right.
So uh it's almost, it's almost like it's designed for towns that are kind of starting down the road, where again, we've already done a lot. Uh so I think initially, when the planners looked at, they're like, oh, we don't have that ordinance, we don't qualify. That's when I talked to Andrew, and he's like, you guys are leading the way in a lot of ways, um so don't, basically said, don't let those. Those uh. Criteria discourage you from applying.
I, I think we should apply for it, staff wants it, I think. The planning board or the zoning board would have control anyway. And our, under our ordinance, I don't see the drawback. There's, there's no strings.
I don't know if you have anything to add, like, I don't, you're at the meeting where they discussed it.
I haven't really gone with that too much, I bet, because he tried to give you a back impact, but.
Yeah.
But uh, I think it doesn't, it doesn't uh. Enter us on the playing boards, make the good decisions that we make. But it's a time, it's great. And I think I've worked just pretty good job of being fair and following the law.
Right? To me, it's a no-brainer, right?
Those points are come back.
But you gotta be careful.
Probably get some grants out of it, right?
Well, we need help with the sewer plant.
Yeah, that's going to be our big fight right there. And the one in the town's ground.
In March, we're going to hit, we're going to hit the impact piece harder. Uh we do have a plan that's, that's working with me to try to do that, so. These are issues to him.
Including the schools in that?
Huh?
Are you including the schools?
What do you include in the schools?
The impact of the schools.
Everything is going to include, it's not something, so, and what we just went to what, the biggest concern we have is on a guy that wants to build a house on his family, and. How that would affect his family. Well, in that, and I'm going to damage it a little bit more. Uh there's a waiver. Where I'm not sure who gives the waiver, the planning board or the SLF board. But due to personal circumstances, they should be waiver award. We're going to work on a charge, you know, there's going to be a charge, well, how much fee is charged to each apartment? Okay, and we can work with that theme, it doesn't matter what they use, but I have suggested we don't want to go with this, because. This adds ten thousand dollars on somebody building a home, I say a two thousand square foot home. I think that's a little excessive for the homeowner.
Should uh. He talk to Bob or that, or somebody on the budget committee to. Maybe get some numbers from the school.
I don't know, do you think you're at that point, or is it?
No, I don't think we're at that point, I think we're probably investigating and trying to convince other people on board that it's a good idea, because there's been some. Pushback on uh particularly on on like I'm saying on a home owners and stuff like that, and there's no pushback on the corporations coming. You know, F of the web, if they had that, that would be out. Um maybe, maybe extend that, still mine even more.
Would help with the new fire.
Fire?
Would help with the new fire truck.
There you go. But, you know, we should have done the same years ago, when the first year I was on the board, I was wondering why we didn't have impact base. But had them by then, we were pretty good, right, now, it's going to help the CIP, because all those, but the beauty of the impact bases. It has to go to one, it has to be put into all those different accounts, it can't go into the general fund. So you can't say, for instance, fire department had, it is a pound has a hundred thousand dollars, say. The SLF can't get in and take that and say, well, we'll put it over here. To save the Grange, can't do it. Ask for what's up in the fire department, which is the pupil. My. It goes to one September. But there's a lot of things to iron up, that's why we're just going to try to push it to a split stage this year.
But you got the ball rolling.
I got the ball rolling, and I think I got at least three to four of the uh members pretty much on the board now. Because we're going to have to have at least four votes, so. Uh you might want to educate your uh representative there. What you guys are thinking about that, but, so he's going with, reflect with the board thing.
Good idea. All right, very good, Stratton Free, go ahead, Joe.
Did I, did I just follow? Steve?
Yep.
I used it, okay, sorry.
We'll go one more time. We'll do that third time in a couple minutes. So Stratton Free Library Heat Pump Proposal.
So we've received the proposal after the same visit we had a few weeks ago for uh just under eleven thousand five hundred. Um so the expendable trust doesn't have that amount yet, so it probably would be something we wait until next spring to do, and I think there's some question about different refrigerant that. Goes into effect next year versus this year, so um the quote might potentially change a little bit, but that doesn't require uh. Which I know we want to resolve the hotline question, but it doesn't require any additional land, that's just using the existing land. So uh basically, we wanted that for, I think, budgeting and CIP purposes, so now we have it.
They need it. Can't read too many books, where.
All right, I understand, it's first we're going to wait until next year, or we're not going to vote on it now?
Correct.
And it's going to go on the, what we went over and looked at on the side of this, the side. And and historically, we can put something through the wall over there, we looked into that.
So why wouldn't we uh move forward tonight?
I don't have the money.
Uh the money and then checking on that refrigerant question, so that can.
But we're going to do it.
Right.
And the money's going to be available next year.
In March.
So. Why wait?
Because it's not March yet.
Okay, and why, why are we talking about it?
Just reporting back that we got the quote.
Oh. You gotta prep me for these, Michael.
Twenty twenty-five town warrant review.
So pay ninety-four. Yeah, so still a lot of uh either highlighted sections or blanks to be.
Okay, to my concluded ninety-fourth. What age might concluded ninety-fourth? Probably the big packet. Biggest one I've seen in my career.
And the C I P packet, we had pictures, so yeah, it was, it wasn't big.
It was a lot.
So article one is choose all, choose by ballot all necessary town officers, so we don't have to talk about that one. Article two, planning, planning board is working diligently on getting us a couple of zoning amendments.
Yeah, we got uh, six of them that are second on definitions and then the. One supposedly coming from the base zone people, they want to do some result there, but we haven't. They've got, it's gotta be by petition, they're gonna get back to us too.
Yeah, so we did get a petition, uh, but it didn't have sufficient signatures. The signature's just twenty-three voters, right? Um, so we're waiting to hear back from council on how to work with it.
The uh, conservation committee is working on a weapons. Uh, which, as is written right now, I'm not in favor of it, because. They went into a hundred foot setback from applying that land and my feeling is that's getting too much profit for us.
So that's article two, so even if there's, say, ten amendments, they're all just part of article two, they don't add to the numbers. Uh, so article three is the fire station placeholder, so all the numbers pretty much are T B D. Just waiting for those blanks to get filled in, but hopefully next week or two. Uh, article four is what the Tiff District Committee's been working on for the West Swansea Water Company. Was looking for a six point four million dollar authorization. Uh, forty percent of that is uh, principal forgiveness from uh, D E S Drinking Water Bureau. So article five, and I'm still working with bond counsel, um, see if we need a separate. I think we will need some kind of sep- separate article for the Tiff District. I don't know if it'll include Barwin Authority, so that's. What that article five was, so if it's a bond article, it'll be up here with the other bond articles. If it's just creating the Tiff District, it might be down. Down lower, because all the bond articles have to be first after the zoning amendments.
So if it's not bond, is it still three fifths or is it majority?
I believe, I believe create, not. Creating the Tiff District is a majority vote. It's a bond, sixty percent.
So strategically, why wouldn't we take the, the easier approach? Of the Tiff? Is it gonna, is it gonna need to raise any bond money in the first year or two?
That's the main question we need to sort out is how, if at all, the. The Tiff portion would relate to the six point four million dollar loan, which. Steve has questions that I don't understand the question, so I can't ask them to get the answers, but we're trying to set up a call with them and. Bond Council to go over that. But yeah, I think, I think that's probably where we'll end up, is that we'll create the district. Um, which can then have some matching funds, once it builds. Builds a value.
Right.
What the uh, says six point four million dollars implies that purchase a single line.
Purchases the system, um, puts in a storage tank and improves the pump house of the main. Pieces.
And the piping to the storage tank.
Yeah.
Okay, uh. So there's more than one pump house, uh, well, I, I heard this pump house right over here, there's no by saying. But that pump is a little longer.
Yeah, pumps out of the river. It's not a.
You gotta put the dam back.
It's not drinking water.
Okay.
Yeah, these are all off basically West Street and one off of California. The, the two operating ones are off of West Street, or I'm sorry, are on West Street, on the south side of West Street. And the third one just isn't operating currently.
And that, that committee is gonna have a meeting on Friday at one o'clock, and we're gonna be looking at the boundaries for the district, so anyone that's interested would love to have it.
Absolutely. It's a big project come on that committee. They put me on that.
We have no water.
We have a old guy.
They threw me on that.
Yeah, we have a new guy.
You're the water guy. Oh, he does.
Big water tank. They've got a big water tank, and we're gonna put Bill's name on it.
Article six, I had a placeholder, because I wasn't positive about the fire attempt, but sounds like we can cross out. Uh, article seven, this is one of those uh, principal forgiveness, so we had a few of these in the past for. Uh, asset management plans, and then this year was the sewer uh, facility or. Yeah, facility study. Uh, so this is for a stormwater management. Uh, capital improvement plan. Basically, this is the grant and the program that helps us get more grants, like we're using a grant for Weber Hill. Using a grant for uh, California North Winchester Street, so this will look at the capital planning for. Stormwater and help us get more grants, and although it looks like it costs, I mean, it costs a hundred thousand dollars, but the state forgives the. Principal of the loan, so there's a nominal cost to it. About seven. Eight is the town operating budget, so we've got T B Ds placed in here, getting close to being able to fill those in, um. That would be for the recommended budget and then the default budget, which is a choice of the voters out. Article nine is the first of the capital reserve accounts, so this is kind of a miscellaneous ones. Um, so it's going to twelve or fifteen different expendable trusts or capital reserve funds totaling. Four hundred seventy-seven thousand and five hundred, so that's based on the uh, different accounts that Mr. Biddle was talking about earlier, the capital improvement plan. And then article ten is for the highway and related uh, expendable trusts and capital reserve funds. So that's a total of six hundred and eighty-five thousand.
I think it's important that we, we highlight the, the road rehab and reconstruction is two thirds of that. We're continuing to invest in. An infrastructure, needed infrastructure.
Article eleven, this is an article we've had the last um, few years. It's kind of our contingency way to save towards the fire station if the. Article doesn't pass, so it is contingent. Article three passes is null and void, but if it's not successful and article eleven passes, we save. Uh, three hundred thousand to the fire station's capital reserve funds. I think we've saved up above five hundred thousand so far. Um, in those two articles, that was the one that got reduced at town meeting last year to offset the increase to the other article. For the range hall, for the range hall, right? So we only saved two hundred thousand last year. But I've, uh, at least as a placeholder, put it back in at three hundred thousand. Part of the idea of that is we're basically paying at least a portion of what we would be paying if the fire station passes. So now if the fire station passes and we don't have that one, that's gonna be offset, and we're saving. Money towards it, so we can also lower the amount we bond for it, so it has kind of benefits on. On sense, either way. Article twelve, I still need to work on the wording on this, but this will be creating a water fund, so it'll probably be contingent on. The article to purchase the water company, so even that six point four million, the intent is that that's going to be covered either by grants. Or the users of the system, so it's a town general obligation, just like the sewer. Uh, costs, but it's not expected to be a taxpayer funded project, so this will create a water fund to. Uh, control those uh, expenses, account for those expenses. Article thirteen, again, when we started, I think, last year. Uh, to save, I just kind of picked another arbitrary number, but eighty thousand towards the ambulance expendable trust fund that we created last year. Um, to save in towards the looming cost increase that we know is coming. Uh, Cheshire County or whatever other ambulance provider we use when our contract expires in a year and a half. I'm not working on getting Mr. Coats in here, probably in December, one of these next couple meetings to talk about. How things are going, what their projections are.
So it's mid twenty-six?
Correct.
That's when our contract ends?
Correct.
Did we put money away last year for that?
Yeah, I believe we did forty last year.
Forty? We would like to do eighty this year, right? And we'll probably get a better handle on it when you have that meeting and see where he's projecting it's gonna go, right?
And then article fifteen, it doesn't seem like it was.
What was article fourteen? Did you skip that?
Oh, sorry, yeah, fourteen, I'm sorry. Um, was in twenty twenty, we created the, the voters approved the commercial industrial. Tax exemption where new commercial industrial projects can apply to receive um. Some tax relief on the new construction, so if they build a new facility, they're creating jobs and providing a public benefit, they can apply for. Um, a temporary tax exemption, so we have had a few of those that have been applied for and received. And every five years you have to reauthorize it, so I don't know if we'll have to have all this language or if we can keep it simpler, I just took the. Old language and said to re-adopt instead of adopt. Uh, might be able to be shorter than they want, but that's what that was, because I think it's been, hasn't been used a ton, but it is a good option, um.
It almost was used with uh Nissan. Back when Co- COVID hit, because.
Can you explain it to me a little? I don't know what to use.
Yeah, so I'll use an example, one that has, well, we'll use one, Frog Brewing was one that applied for it, so they were building a new facility. And they approached the board, I think, after they gotten their approvals before they constructed and said, you know, building a new facility. They outlined, you know, jobs that they were creating, how they're providing recreational opportunities, and they can apply for up to fifty percent for. Ten year, up to ten years. And the board can say, well, we'd like to give you forty percent for three years, because we feel these are. It's a little bit of a judgment um, call on the planner, works with them and makes a recommendation. So it's, it's a temporary exemption to help, help us lure and incentivize people to build new.
So the wording here gives us the option to go up to ten years, but we. Hopefully, we don't use that in ten years, but we have that option, right?
So the authorization, and people ask about this, they probably will again, because it's, it seems inconsistent. You can do exemptions up to ten years. But the approval to give the exemptions only lasts five years. Uh, so you have to redo your ability to give the exemption every five years, but you could give it ten years.
So the select board did that with the frog and it, it worked?
Correct. I don't remember what the term and amounts were, but, and then the other one was the Homestead Wall and Mill, when they recreation seventy-nine E was it? No, we did approve seventy-nine E for that after, but. What's that?
They still pay the school tax.
Correct, it's not the whole thing. I, I don't think it is county. I think town, it, it is complicated. I think town, they don't pay county, county. They still pays.
So basically, this is just to basically renew that rule, like just to redo it.
Keeping that tool in your toolbox.
You put in, and then how many, you do that every three years?
Five years.
Five years.
Like this, uh, this would apply to any uh, new business that would apply.
Correct, correct. And it's only for commercial and industrial, so it does not apply for. Uh, residential or multifamily. Seventy-nine E, which is approved for, I think only the mill property does apply to housing.
The exemption shall apply only to municipal and local school property taxes assessed by the town. State education and county taxes are excluded. But I think.
Yeah, it's an odd calculation.
Article fifteen.
Any other business was maybe doing it more than the, sorry. And then, uh, well, actually we'll have a new article, but we received a petition one article on Monday. To increase the number of selection from three to five. So that will out there. Go on the one, you have got forty-five registered voters on it.
Forty-five people signed that? You have that?
The entire Wilson bond.
So it's not the slightest constituents in North Swansea, a few stragglers.
Wow, that's gonna be a tricky one.
Well, we don't. If we limit it to five, we can go for thirty.
Huh?
It doesn't work, it just won't.
Yeah, Bob.
Uh, okay.
Bob Duroch.
I have some.
Is this on the warrant?
No.
Okay. Is this just public input? All right, you gotta hold off.
Okay.
We're gonna get to you next.
You know, sir, I had a question, the war, I was trying to learn, but I had a question about the uh, the internet and fire department. Would that be permit to ask that now?
Sure, if it's.
We're looking as a town to, uh, to get a professional ambulance service.
So we, uh, so we used to use the Lucio, as you mentioned, they went out of business in twenty twenty.
We have all of the, yeah.
We have an ambulance for backup, and then our primary ambulance is from our, is through Cheshire County, yeah. So we have a three-year contract that runs until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six.
We have A L S support with our A, with our ambulance or just basic E M Ts?
We, we don't have the paramedic level now, but we do have. The A L S as far as E M T advance, so.
So, but you, you would need that paramedic, uh, so you're still gonna have to rely on county, county. My question is, if we, if we move forward with this, they were operating at less than thirty percent. Check your county.
Less than thirty percent of what?
Of the staff that required, they, they, they were at thirty percent or less. That's a county job. And they offer thirty or forty people to get their E M Ts and paid for by county. And I don't think they, they got one person.
Really?
From Great Grove. Pretty perfect academy. I was part of that class.
Right, but Ray Brooks, a private business.
So no, they, but they con- commonly contract in Great Grove.
Right, to cover that side of the counter.
Dollars per student.
Yep.
Paid for by county, our tax dollars. They, my point is, they couldn't even, they couldn't even. Get a, a, a kickback on it. But, uh, so how are we gonna facilitate a professional ambulance staff? What kind of money is gonna be needed? And where's the talent coming from? Who's gonna pass the background investigation?
So there's two, two separate issues. The one that you're addressing is the amount that we're basically putting into a savings account. For, for when uh, we renewed uh, or. Do a new contract in twenty twenty-six. When we went through this a year and a half ago, and we had proposals. The round number was three hundred and fifty thousand. One was higher, one was a little low, but basically three hundred and fifty thousand, and then we signed a contract with the county for substantially less. So what we're trying to do now is just save up to lessen the bite. What you're speaking to is, is gonna come up towards the end of twenty-five, early twenty-six, when we're getting into discussions with companies. That, that would uh. Come forward to, in response to an R F P, uh, for us to consider them uh, as, as the provider.
But my concern is we're gonna put the infrastructure in place, just like with the fire department.
We're, we're not gonna be able to, we're not putting any.
Put personnel to.
But we're not putting any infrastructure in place, this is.
But my point is, we didn't have a machine, but we have a fire engine, we have the ambulance.
We have, we have. We have fire, we have to have fire engines anyway.
Yeah, well, we don't have the personnel, but effectively we run them. And what I learned from my E M T class is that if I, if I. Do any emergency medical on anyone in this room tonight, and I'm not licensed, I'm hellheartless. Once I hold that license, if I take any one of you and put my hand on you, I can get arrested for assault. I can be arrested for imprisonment, and it's happening. So for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour, it's not worth it. And this is what you're running into. A, a paramedic is getting, you know, thirty dollars an hour, he's lucky, she's lucky. But there's all sorts of things in the background that. A lot of people don't want to go into it. And so.
Yeah, but we didn't make that decision to go down that road, is what we're trying to say.
Yeah, but I, but we're moving in that direction, and I know.
No, we're not.
So we're just.
I'm moving, well, we don't know, right now, we have.
We see the numbers.
We know our costs are going to increase somehow, so.
And if you look at projected revenue from transports, I mean, so that, that is part of the equation, if we have our own ambulance.
Right.
We can get six thousand dollars and transport somebody, so you are looking at that component, and the numbers work out.
And the county offsets their costs by doing interfacility transports from one hospital to other hospitals. They have two ambulances that.
They're trying to make life a little bit, because they're using outside agencies to do a lot of transfers, and I know that for a year.
They have two ambulances.
Yeah.
That are dedicated to that. If a third ambulance call comes in.
I'm a.
It goes to, okay, I'm just saying, it goes to another ambulance service, because maybe they can't wait. That's where great bro comes in.
No, I, but I was, I, I was in the chief's office. The people were on call for twelve hours up in their bed. A call came in, I was right there, I listened to everything. I listened to the on scene commander, go upstairs and tell people we have a transport, they never came down. Fifteen minutes later, I was sitting right there and the chief, the on scene commander, great little call, because they're doing all the communications. And the commander said, do you want it? They did. So as a taxpayer, that's a little purple to me.
That chief's gone.
It wasn't the chief, it was the on scene commander.
I'm just saying.
Point is, this is, the system is good, it's, it's the movement inside the system. And, and we're gonna have that. I'm a component of the county, uh, the N X. But it's kind of. And, and so. You answered my question. I'm just concerned we're, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward with this and not be able to, just like. We're not gonna have the people to fill the positions. That's my concern. It's like in every aspect of our life, we do not, our shelves are bare. We don't have people. That are willing to work or capable of work.
You're talking to a board of selectmen of the town of Swansea. You're talking about national dis- issues.
No, I'm talking right here.
You're talking about shelves being bare.
Well, that, that fills their capacity. Now.
The shortage of EMTs, firefighters and police officers is nationwide. Right?
I'm only speaking to what I know right here. So you're, I'm speaking at a national level, I'm speaking right here.
I'm telling you that you're bringing up things that are national concerns.
I'm bringing up global. So I, I just want that to be clear. I'm talking local. I, I know that I agree with.
We have tried. We have raised the ca- uh, payroll costs or.
Yeah.
What we pay. We have done sign-on bonuses. We've done everything we can. To bring in first responders. There needs to be something that changes. In society. To fix it. And I don't think this board can do that.
No, but that's why I'm thinking volunteerism is a better way for us to go. And that's what I might, that's what I want in, in to address. Is I need to be enlightened why we're not pursuing volunteerism. Over professional, because once you do that professional, then there's all sorts of mandates.
You see that, oh, the mandates are the same. You took the class, you know that.
But I'm, I'm talking, uh.
Right, yeah. So.
I'm sorry.
Your EMT, it doesn't matter whether you get paid or not, you're still in the law.
Right.
Yeah, but that's, but I'm talking about more, more with the, uh. I was addressing the EMT, I was talking more with the fire. And, and, and the lack of personnel that we're experiencing.
Well, we're call fi- we're a call fire department. That is basically volunteer. They're paid a small hourly. No. It does not.
That's the question I had, because the way I comprehended it was, you, you have volunteer and then you have professional and you have.
They're all, they're all professional. And it doesn't matter if you're getting paid or you're doing it strictly volunteer. If you screw up or there's an indication that you have screwed up, you can go to jail. It doesn't make a difference. You could die in a fire, either way. Well, I mean, you wanna talk about that, then we're talking about. The litigious society we live in. Where you can sue people for doing absolutely nothing wrong. Just because you feel slighted, then you're gonna sue them, so.
And that's why we sit here and we try to figure this mess out.
You know what I wanted this thing to do? You know what I'm gonna, sell my house and become indigenous and then you guys can play like those? That's what I'm learning for this.
And it's.
You gotta sell your house first.
But, but I mean, this is, I, I've been saying it facetiously.
Three years.
What's that?
So you know.
Oh, they can't come back at you?
Yeah, three years, you have to be three years, so you know, then you can do.
There you go. Can he live with you as a three year?
Two months, and I know a lot of, a lot of the people down there that call themselves homeless. We had great conversations with them. I know them perfectly. And every single one of them told me they had a lot of money. They came from New York. They came from Connecticut. They came from all over. And they say they have a lot of money. They're here looking for housing and they're on waiting lists to get into housing.
Hmm.
On our guy. They belong to unions, they're professionals, they own businesses. And this. Good people, nice people, good to talk to. And. And we're, we're stuck with the problem. And then you have people that really deserve it and need it. That don't get it because. Of the abuse.
Yeah.
It doesn't make us bad people because we're questioning it. We wanna find, tune it and get it to the right one. That need it. Not the players, not the gamers. That's my public. You can ask my questions. I'm available for any committee. I'm not gonna just sit here and bitch. I'll, I'll throw my hat into the ring. I don't give a damn what committee it is. If, if that's, I, I will. Uh, so you know my information. If, if there's something, send it my way. Uh, I, I thought you said you needed.
What level of commitment do you have on a weekly basis? And for how long? I'm only asking because there's vacancies on, on various boards. But there's, there's, there's zoning board.
He heard looking for volunteers, he's out of here.
Conservation commission that, that meet regularly is, if that, it's land use is, is of interest to you.
Well, it, it, it isn't. But I, I mean, the, um.
There's also committees that, that.
I don't wanna be in a community, just be in a community. I wanna learn something and I wanna, uh. I, I, I just. I might make an important decision if I wanna stay in Swansea. I can't work with that guy. He's insulting. No, I've learned a lot and I'm glad, you know, I, now I've ruffled some feathers. But it opened up a dialogue.
I'll admit, you ruffled mine. I guess what you said.
But listen, the reason.
And I'm all right with it. Now at least you, you, you came here.
Yeah.
And I'm glad you came here and, and you spoke and I just think everybody needs to look to the other side of the window in this situation and. And come here and understand what we do, you know? I just got frustrated with it and I spoke out and that's why it happened. Right, I'll be truthful with you.
You know, the thing is, is that I'm not becoming a good message, my ability sucks. I pissed off people my whole life. But that doesn't negate the fact that a taxpayer.
Right.
People piss us off, us all, all day long.
Right.
And we go, we, we have to stay. It's, it's some is personal, then you, then you, you may be personal. But you know. I, I felt now was the time because everyone's taxing. I felt it was a good time to, to try to get a dialogue. But we have to put our egos aside and we have to put our differences aside. We have to be willing to listen to, listen to everything. I've learned so much tonight. Just by asking a question. Bob, dad, I've been out there talking to him. He's the perfect person to give him the budget.
Yeah.
My biggest tennis.
And the energy committee.
But we have to be willing to get together outside of this room. If anyone here is welcome to come and have coffee. And enlighten us, but to make these more meaningful. We have to, we have to have our doubts in mind so we can come here and affect. Good discussion instead of just a bright session and a big session.
Mike, when's the next, uh, coffee at the? Congregation church.
Yes, I don't go home anymore.
Is that with the, the first site?
Yeah.
I would.
Coffee with seniors.
I went there and I, and I heard everything about the historical value. They had a presentation, they invited to a house and videotaped. And then, you know, the town worked it down before anyone could see it. And see, everyone has an agenda. Everyone has their, their story. And it's trying to s- get through that to get the right information to make an informed decision. If I had this conversation with, uh, Bob Obede. He may convince me that. We're doing the best we can in these circumstances. But now I'm seriously considering minimizing my. Uh, while I still can have saved my life, I may stop being a landlord active. I may be, I, I'm just really looking at it and if I'm looking at it hard, this is saving my health in the future, because. I would have this event, I would want to event it to order maker, and we lost everything. Because we need plus people to change and. And you can't work there.
You mentioned, uh.
Jessica, just a second, Bob. Jessica.
Since it got brought up, um. If someone is considering serving and volunteering on, but if somebody's something sort, what is the best way to find out? What communities have openings? Um. How, what's the best way to figure out like where your best fit would be? Cause obviously, everybody's not really good at doing everything or have.
You're right, Jessica.
So.
Michael.
Mike.
What would be best for you?
Michael would be your first, your first, uh, go, but you could also go on the website and just click on the different. Uh, boards and, and committees and most of them, there's a, uh, like a paragraph. It, it gives a sense of what the board or committee does. And if that's of interest, maybe that'll help, but, but Michael knows what. What boards and committees are, are looking for members.
And is there a season of where, okay, we're taking, we're taking volunteers? Versus, I feel like I remember seeing something. Maybe it was before we voted last time, but there were openings and I didn't know if you had to put your name in at that time or is like, you know, is there a window? Of time where you volunteer, you put your name in, or is it just open all the time or you're not?
I think so, I know.
Yeah, so all the committee terms expire around town meeting, so they're usually on a rotation, so that, there usually is a push. Around March when we're saying, okay, these spots are expiring. People might say they wanna come back on, but we, it's kind of an opportunity to post and get out there what is open. Um, but that doesn't mean there are openings year round. Um, but yeah, I'll, I'll check and see if our.
But there's a big window, I think he's saying in the Monch area.
Do you have a committee on the M X for fire? I, I mean, the water one sounds really familiar to me because I mean, interesting to me because I do believe it's an issue. And I don't know if it would be advantageous for us of that being by the sector. I don't know if that would be great for the community.
It is current, it, it currently, the one that we're.
Not that.
Is in the private sector.
And, and that's why I would be very interested in that because, uh. I, I, I do believe that's a, an, an issue that's gonna be. Happening more and more. I mean, they're taxing people in Massachusetts out of their own personal wells. Uh, they're putting meters on them. I do believe that would be enticing to me, but is there anything with the, I wanted to learn more about the fire. Uh, because I, it's, it saddens me that I feel that we're living on a slippery slope and that. I, I, whether it's real or not, I feel like. There, you know, this really needs to be addressed.
Hmm.
Because, uh, we all, you know, we don't need them until we need them. And it's not important until it's your loved one. And, and that's the world we live in. But I, I'd like to.
Well, I don't wanna volunteer Jessica, but if you talk with Jessica after the meeting, she, she may be able to give you some insight, but Eric Mattson or. Or Mick Sanchez would be two, two good people to reach out to.
Yeah.
Uh, Norm Scancy. Yeah, Mike Burt, uh, the, the four of them are, are essentially leadership.
Firehouse since I moved here. And it's here every year, but there's not enough info, good information for me to make an informed decision. So I need to get this scheme on.
If you talk with Michael after the meeting, he can fill you in on all the work that the committee did. With, with the current mission for, for the fire station. Uh, they're about to complete their, their project. They've done an absolutely incredible job. It's just amazing to see.
Why is a new firehouse absolutely critical for the development of this community? I mean, uh, as opposed to, because as you drive by and you look by, you know, that's a nice, you're a layperson, that's a nice firehouse. Oh, that's a nice firehouse. From a layperson's standpoint. And so it's harder to comprehend why must we have. A new firehouse.
Well, the, uh, PowerPoint presentation, I think has radiuses on it, right?
Yeah, we'll kind of wait for the final members.
Right, but doesn't it have the radiuses?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That will show you, because of the size of the town, forty-five square miles. We kinda need great fire stations.
But that kind of, you know, it's not about aesthetics, it's not about keeping up with other towns. This is, that's what I'm looking at, looking for. So there's actual, uh, graph that will show response times and, and we have a deal with river and bridges.
So. Okay, we, we have plans and everything if you want.
Are you in eighty-four?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're in the same post.
There you go.
Okay, so we'll talk.
Yeah.
I can talk to you too, I'm the boss. I heard that you're a boss and I don't even know you, but you're a first town, you tell them you're supposed to everything. He's more out of twenty. The smartest one.
Now we've worked our way to you.
Unless we are, we met the smartest guy in the spot. No, I'm looking forward to it.
It's all these, uh, big projects. Just like the, you know, fire station. Stealing with police tobacco. It should be just working with the, the back end, should be a small group of people. That can do some backroom operations or digging, blah, blah. During the day while the chief is working. Then at five o'clock, we met, it's a good time to get on reading. And you go right down to the line on all these big projects now. Along with the, uh. Yeah. How it works. Other words, uh, soul.
Thank you, Charlie.
Bob, you want your public input?
Okay, I'm, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I don't know which way you guys think, but all of us add another lagoon. Well, well, there's, uh. Pipe up the key.
Sure, answer is we don't really know yet. We've, we, we got a forgivable loan, one of those forgivable loans I talked about, basically a grant. To have underwood engineers do a study of the options. So they're gonna look at, it wouldn't be another lagoon. It's my understanding would be some kind of chemical treatment. But they'd look at what would it cost to improve the existing system or what would it cost to? To do what you said and, and, uh, pipe it to Keen.
EPA and DES basically changed the rules on us. That plant was fine. They changed the rules. Now we have to have a plant like Keen has where we have a lot of people working there. Doing chemical treatment. Troy, I think, is in the same boat.
My thoughts, I don't know if you should do this, but, uh, what, what about why to, if you needed to. Uh, put a pipeline up to the, uh, one of the, in, directly, uh, rail trail. I don't know if that's possible. You have to.
Probably cost. Cost a few million to do it and it probably costs a hundred million in legal fees.
Better than that, not much.
Been trying for three years to get the rail trail to let us put signs on.
But. You're right. I mean, the idea is that.
If, if you go straight across by. Just saw the cemetery or. Right there, connect with a drill. It's a straight shot right up to. Uh. On the Matthews Road.
Well, the thought is to go out Eaton Road. Catch all those houses. Then cut across. Uh, maybe catch some of the Swansea Center, Gold Coast area. Go down the Causeway Road. That was for you. Go down Causeway Road and then you're right there.
You're not in the Gold Coast, don't get out of here.
Oh, good.
You can see it.
I can see it.
I can see it.
Well, I, I, I thought about just a plan here for a straight shot.
Yeah.
It's a good idea. It's a good rule.
You put it over there, you can always move it.
Train's coming back, Bob.
Well, anybody else?
If not, we got a couple more old businesses. We got North Swansea Zip Code Update.
This is exciting.
Yes.
Long. Long-term project we've been working on trying to eliminate. So Jimmy, you know what this one's about? Some part of. Sly's Kingdom in North Swansea uses the Keen Zip Code.
So you use O three, four, three, one.
Right.
Where's the rest of it?
As well as Surrey, Roxbury and Keen.
I'll use this zip code.
Yeah. Now the problem comes in if you order something online. Like I know where Park Street and Keen is now because a lot of my packages would go up there.
Will.
Yeah, and, uh. There's actually been a fatality because. Um. Grove Street in North Swansea. There was a Grove Street over here, which is where the fire department got started too. And there was a Grove Street in Keen. Which. People thought maybe that was where the house was on fire, but it was in North Swansea. And, uh, a child died in that and then. A neighbor that tried to get in to save the kid died also.
That was amongst our.
Yeah. So.
So.
So that was twenty-five years ago, so it's been ongoing.
And about ten years ago, we changed a lot of our street names that were like the north, but we don't have a. We think, is it North Grove or Grove?
We have Grove.
Still have Grove Street, but North, North Grove and South Grove are now Summer Street.
Right. Right.
We did what we could to eliminate some of the confusing names, but the zip code issue so far has eluded us. It literally takes an act of Congress, and we're potentially getting some movement on the act of Congress. Um so it's been included, our, so we've been working with a national coalition of communities that are all. Either they're newer communities that don't have their own zip code, I think there might be a few others that have similar issue to us. Um where there's, where they have multiple zip codes, but we've been included in. H R has resolution eight seven five three, which the House Oversight and. Accountability Committee has a chance representation, so. We're hoping either in this session or the next session that that gets brought forward, so. Drafted a letter based on our kind of prior letters to each of our. Um so we gotta do the two incumbent senators, the incumbent house rep, in case it comes up in the next month. And then the, our congresswoman elect, so it's got different versions, but they're all relatively similar. Uh Custer just says you might have it in the coming set, in the rest of the session and the. Um good luck, no one talks about it, and I see my own session, so they're all more or less the same.
Well, the.
The summary that you gave is indicative that the most may have passed it or may be passing it.
Right.
And being said, but they're waiting on.
And then we'll be all O three, four, four, six.
Right, except for West Swansea P O boxes.
West Swansea P O boxes will be O three, four, six, nine.
That's what I use.
Yeah.
Mine's O three, four, six, nine. And what was the other one, O three, four?
Well, they gave us a lot of.
O three, four, four, six.
Where is O three, four, four, ten?
Everywhere except West Swansea's post office in North Swansea. You may end up being it also.
They fought us hard, but change Jhane's office and and Amy Custer's office. Really helped. They carried the water for us initially. Became so close.
Hmm.
But this time, well. We might make.
Just have to hope that this.
I'll give you one.
Postmaster general, whoever stays healthy.
We need to sign each one.
I never signed my name so much since I became selectman.
Did you know that was much of the.
You just JP it, right? JP.
Yeah, which Billy does something. Quick thing too. We gotta go to where Mr. Colby. He didn't have a stamp.
Oh, he bought it.
I had to sort of to go there, can I get a stamp?
Oh, he literally.
Wish him a happy birthday, I think his birthday was just.
There you go. Fifty years ago, fifty? It can run for state rep.
But you never talked to.
It was in the paper. Fifty or twenty-five years ago.
He ever told me that.
Is his father Ken? Yeah, maybe that was. Anything else on the budget, follow up or can we?
I don't know, there, I don't know if there is a, a way of any of it, I really.
Did you see what I sent you, Michael, that that map about the taxes in Hampshire? You see what I text you? Go look at your texts.
I don't have anything.
Right here.
None.
Oh, yes, yes.
Read that, look at that, look at that, look at Hampshire compared to the whole state.
Saving the.
We're no Tennessee.
Fun, yeah, fun balance.
Fun balance, and that, this is what Mike is talking about. Uh but that money doesn't go. Back because if we owe money from state or anything else, that money's valuable, that's gotta satisfy first, right? So if we say when we're physically responsible. That we're, we don't reap that all that money, it will on paper, which could, but we have outstanding debt.
We have to keep a fund balance, I think this year, what are we at, ten point eight eight percent or something?
Uh I think it's, no, I think you end up around nine.
So we use as much as we could to lower the tax rate. But that only works on the town taxes, not on any of this education. So. The fund balance by law, we're not allowed to exceed seventeen percent. I think of our. Uh. Total budget.
Kind of the school and all of it.
And the reason for that is because. We get taxes paid in June and December. But all the rest of the year, we have to pay bills, we have to make payroll. So if we don't have a fund balance to work off of, we have to borrow money. And pay interest, so. So you keep a little bit. And you're right, e- every year that you don't use, because we can only spend the money that. The uh town meeting authorizes us to spend. So ideally, it's not all spent, and that goes into the fund balance.
But it it on paper, it looks like, oh wow, look at, we have this money, but it's. It's it's already, it's bought, we don't add that.
And it's lower this year than it's been.
Yeah. I think our kind of amazing, it's it's just that. At eighty percent, and I don't feel like we. That that's, and I don't know how that's fixed, and I don't see how that's ever going down, like that is that best. It's, it's bad for me.
But just because the taxes went up. You know, as far as what people paid. Doesn't mean that the town has more money.
Just made more buildings.
Right, well. Because the June bill was an estimate, uh half of last year's bill. And then December's bill is figured based on what we voted for in March. And making up the rest of it. You know, from June, because we we did the half. So I don't know, what we increased last March before everything was added on, was like seven percent or something or.
Yeah.
So that was a twenty percent inflation thing, you know? Because our taxes went up like seven percent last year. And then this year, I don't think they went up as much, but.
The town portion is six percent.
Six, so. But that's why the taxes went up, the money's still the same.
And I, and I think that's the comment, well, one of the comments said, well, Jimmy, because I said. You know. You, we can't tell her, where our money is, as a taxpayer, we can't tell her, oh hey, my taxes went up, we need to pay more on it. And. But that one. Constant is the eighty percent going to one entity, and we're left. Trying to keep our heads above, I'm talking us collectively, you as the body, us as their taxpayers, well, we're all taxpayers.
Right.
But you know what I'm saying, you're, you're. It's left that, what you guys trying to figure out, appreciate everything you're trying to do. Well, collectively. It's. I don't see how, how we can fix it, how we can stop. Uh and it, and it's just unsettling.
Actually, we might be a little better situation, right, with some more ta- more tax money coming in with the new. Buildings, right?
Right, like Jimmy's saying, April first. Any improvements to a property? Sets that tax rate for that. You know, next year, basically. So Webb, the big building on Route thirty-two, it wasn't built April first of last year. So, yeah.
Twenty-five thousand dollars or worse. For that, for a tax.
For their taxes, it's quite a bit more. Um they, I think are. This. From April first, they were assessed at two million dollars or something, but that's because they weren't built.
I don't mind that personally at all.
But now that they're built, I don't know, how much would that building cost, bro, fifteen million, something like that, twenty? You know, so that's gonna come in next year, that's gonna help us.
So is it, is that the plan to try to bring?
Oh, yeah, that's always a plan, anything that can bring in taxes without. Without the education.
Water systems, so we can get businesses to come on Route ten. And to get water system that we can supply, that's why we need a storage tank that will deliver pressure, you need pressure with water.
Because I, I do believe that, I don't know.
Businesses are gonna be great for Swansea.
Will you guys be manipulating the taxes? That's gonna help, that's insane.
Right.
There's so many people that work with the team, you gotta jump a lot every week over there, makes one place that everybody.
Built here instead of in Keen, you know, they left Keen to come here. Liquor store.
I mean, Kane is, Kane is full now, this is where it's gonna spill into Swansea is the most, this is one of the may not, we saw with Kane right now, and this is.
Swan Lake Road, there's seventy-five acres, and if you look at the way that's. It's in conservatory, but if you look how that's structured. North of me, there's easement, that's an access, and then south of me, there's easement, so it's a orchid. That expands in seventy-five acres, which I'm sure at some point is gonna open up for housing.
Not if it's in conservation.
This is the biggest thing.
So, so our.
It's either current use or conservation.
So our, my grandpa sold our two hundred farm to a conservatory, never ever be built on.
Yep.
Twenty years after he died, they sold three hundred acre parcels for a whole hundred thousand apiece. We died, my grandfather died at four farm, both farm in nineteen twenty-nine, trying to keep, keep it. You know, take care of the land. So it seems like there's always a way to rock it.
Now, once an easement's put on it, it's in perpetuity.
Yeah, and and I'm, I'm, that makes me feel good to hear that, but I I.
Well, it doesn't make me feel good to hear that, because if that lands in conservation, it can't be developed for housing.
Right.
If it's in current use, then it could be, it could be developed for.
Blue bridges, Rob, you must know it.
I I don't know what, what status it's in, I'm sure it's at least in current use, but the question is whether it has a conservation easement.
I think he put it in his dog, his children's name, so he could uh. So that would be like a retirement or something for his children, I can't, oh, I think the way, seventy-five acres and the way it's designed. I I just can't, and he's a surveyor, he surveyed, his name's on.
Ed?
Ed, that's his property. So.
He's a good Republican, I don't think he was, I don't know, maybe were.
Is there a little Republican?
There are many of us.
I bust your butt, I.
Of course, not at this table, but outside of here.
Well, I wanna see who was a Republican, who wasn't a Republican. Come down my restaurant. I think that would be a great place to have a community discussion.
We do.
Free, free, what, the first period. Well, I'll take a coffee.
That's right, girl, that's right.
Well, I mean, but uh. It's, wouldn't it be nice if, if everyone could just get, get out and and. And talk and learn. Right, so.
We we please those people who come to the planning board, but what they do is they wait till something is built, then they come to complain to us about what.
An old home thing, we have pretty good discussions.
I was wondering how many people actually, can you tell how many people came in with Zoom tonight, is there a number, it shows how many people. Well, there's the meditator and one other person at the right now.
A lot of people that watch it after to Facebook.
So if we have a, a.
Yeah, you can look up this meeting tonight, see you.
Well, I I do know one other person with eight, because he texted, that's me, uh where are all the meetings posted?
Town website. Town website, town hall.
Town YouTube.
Less than thirty here tonight, I was trying to read officially a number, but I think I had, I had one people here tonight.
Yeah, that's good.
I don't. Should be more of a, right, out of a thousand, seven thousand people.
So that's what I mean.
Yeah, I keep mine in my mouth. Well, you, you should try that, you one of those guys that piss people off and it's like, oh. And then everyone said, thank you, Jimmy, you did a good job. There's eight people talking on Facebook.
There you go, eight people on Facebook.
Well, I would like to say publicly that if I insulted it, it was, it was totally unintentional.
Well, thank, I thank you very much.
Because that, I mean, uh.
I'm gonna sleep a lot about it tonight, George, thank you.
That was never my intent, it's just like I said, I. I'm, I'm in that, I kill trees real good, I've been killing trees for thirty years, I can kill a tree, but I will put my foot in my mouth every single time.
So thanks for coming down.
Well, I appreciate you guys being so uh open to discussion, and you know, usually finalists, you, you just sit there and. Uh you're applying the wall, I think it's very nice to have this discussion, I don't know how you guys get things accomplished, but.
Well, now we gotta kick everybody out, because we got a non-public.
Thank you, Michael.
It's gonna stay open until after the sun.
If I don't see you guys, Merry Christmas.
See you, George.
Uh.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll go on the website.
Yeah, take a look around.
Well, that water thing sounded very.
That, that part is almost done. But there might be another phase of it.
No, but uh I think that's important. I look it up. I'm writing to those. I didn't meet the veterans this year, because I was looking. Yeah, I appreciate it, oh, thank you, thank you very much.
I didn't know Conservation Committee was upstairs. When I saw, I pulled in here at like quarter of five.
You don't know.
All the parking spots are full, I said, oh my God, Jimmy, what did you do?
So I, so Michael's like, oh, we're driving, going, Jimmy, would you pull up? And so I pulled up and I'm like, yeah, because I told him, Michael, oh, cowboys, they ain't gonna shop, they're just cowboys on Facebook. I just wanna let him know we're all ready, and when I pull up, my little simi calls. Oh, you should have saw, I was. He was one of the. I need to defer staff. It's not good to have negative things.
Seen other stuff he's done, he'll just throw stuff out. And gets, you know, get the conversation going. I think these are the worst. Just wants to. But that's fine, but that's fine, I mean, that's what it's for, you know, like.
You know what bothered me, we're all in here working nights, like even all the town leaders, to me, that was on the edge of slander with that, so. He needed to be addressed, and and I went to Michael, and Michael said, I go, I'm. Three days, I don't suffer, Bill came down the rest, and I said, Bill, I can't take it, can't watch it. I told Bill I couldn't control myself, the other night.
We, are we in non-public?
I don't think you can motion, oh.
I'm gonna make a motion to move it to non-public.
Under, under.
Hey.
Hey.
Am I supposed to stay or not?
Uh might be easier maybe for me to call you, because I think he's gonna have to shut off the Zoom for the recording and stuff, so, does that work? I call you on my cell phone?
Um, yeah, I guess so. Okay.
Oh, okay, so maybe he can, okay, yeah, maybe he can close it, we can reopen it. We'll figure something out.
You're gonna call, you're gonna call. You're gonna call, you're gonna call me, Michael?